Welcome to the El Segundo City Council Meeting, August 21st, 2018. All right, all right, so I'd like to call the meeting to order and we're going to have an invocation tonight by Pastor Chuck Brady from St. John's Lutheran Church and Chris Pimentel will do our pledge allegiance, so please stand.
Thank you, Council. I would like to say that I have served in other cities and it seems like you have an awful lot of uniforms around here today. I guess that's a good sign. Let me just say a word of prayer for you all. Dear Father in heaven, I do ask a blessing on the great city of El Segundo, a wonderful place, and upon this council as they make their decisions, let them be with wisdom, with insight, that they may gain and retain the trust of the community. I ask this blessing in the name of Jesus for his sake. Amen.
To life in the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a couple of presentations tonight. We're going to start off with Chief Donovan from the Fire Department. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of City Council. It's my honor this evening to introduce our newest member to the Fire Department, Matthew Goodenough. Matthew comes to us from Northern California where he was born in Los Altos, California, which is near Stanford University to his parents, John and Jody. His father, John, was able to travel down with him. He's with us tonight in the audience. His mom, Jody, is out of the state on business and what I've heard is she's probably watching live stream right now, so make sure you smile and make nice with mom. He also had three, he was one of three boys and the boys were very active with sports growing up. They played baseball, tennis, they did a lot of swimming and water polo activities and it's that water sports that carried him on to high school. He went to St. Francis High School in Mountain View and he played four years of water polo for that high school team, three of which they competed for the CIF championship, so a really prestigious program there. After high school, he continued his water sports, stayed on the water polo team at the University of Arizona and earned a bachelor's degree in political science with a minor in history. All four years, he was the captain of that water polo team, so quite the athlete. Realizing that poli-sci and history were both good degrees but maybe not the career path he was looking for, he moved back to Northern California and pursued the career in the fire service. He went the normal route, went to the junior college and received an AS degree in fire technology as well as an AS degree in paramedicine, went on to get his national registry and is currently a certified paramedic in the state of California. He also began to do the Fire Academy training and after completing the Fire Academy was picked up as a volunteer firefighter for the Woodside Fire Department. He also worked as a pit lane firefighter for the Sonoma Raceway where he gained some unique firefighting experience and all the while, he was working on a critical care transport unit for a special team out of the Lucille Packer Children's Hospital at Stanford. All of this really provided the background, education, experience that made him a perfect fit for us here at the El Segundo Fire Department. When he's not working, Matt loves the outdoors, camping, fishing, skiing, wakeboarding. He enjoys most of those activities with his fiancee, Ashley, who's also with us in the audience. What makes this really special and unique, and when he tested for firefighter, we interviewed quite a lot of people and he stood out for a lot of reasons, but the icing on the cake was the fact that his fiancee, Ashley, came from this area. She went to El Segundo High School. Her parents are in the audience this evening. His soon-to-be father-in-law is an LA City firefighter, so there's a real connection and tie-in here. So, we're really happy to have him. I need to tell you a quick story and this shows of the incredible character and abilities and it's swimming and life safety that comes together. And Matt had completed his background, was queued up and ready to get hired by us and he had a couple of weeks off, so he went to South Lake Tahoe on vacation. And while on vacation with a buddy, they were walking along the shore and they heard some screams for help and there were two people that were boaters out on the lake in a kayak and the kayak went topside, turned over. One of the kayakers went underwater and Matt, without hesitating, swam into the water. He rescued the individual who was at this point unconscious. Rescue swam the individual to shore. He and his buddy initiated CPR. Shortly thereafter, 911 was activated and the South Lake Tahoe Fire Department showed up and they initiated care, transported the patient and this 22-year-old survived and he was able to walk out of the hospital. And it was certainly the beginning of a long career of saves that we expect from him and it shows what an incredible opportunity we have and I want to thank you for those efforts. And he told me, he called me up and said, "I've got some news" and I was like, "Oh, boy, here we go." When he told me this story, I couldn't believe, I couldn't believe and I was just overwhelmed with excitement and really thankful for those efforts. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Matt Goodenough, who is the newest firefighter for the El Segundo Fire Department.
So, Matthew, welcome to El Segundo. Would you like to say a few words and then we'll take some photos with you?
First off, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Council, chamber, just wanted to say thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to be here. Like, from the very beginning, I've wanted basically the department to believe in me and see what I provide to the table and it's, this is it. This is home for me. So, I appreciate everything that you guys have put forth for me and I'm really happy to be here. Quick couple, I want to say thank you to my amazing fiancee and then also to my amazing family, John and Jody, and then my brothers, Patrick and Andrew, Robbie and Lori, for being supportive since day one, and then all my mentors, Dean and Andrew. So, again, thank you very much for this opportunity and I won't disappoint.
Thank you. Well, welcome to El Segundo. Any comments? So, we'll do a quick photo with you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, a couple of photos. All right, a couple more. And one more. Wait a minute, one more. Okay, there we go. And that's great. Thank you so much. Very good. Here we go. Couple of shots here. And, oh, we got a winner there. That's good, man. Thank you so much. All right, one more, one more, one more. One more. Just gotta wait for, ah, here we go. And, here we go. And smiles. Beautiful, beautiful family. Thank you so much.
Once again, welcome, Matthew, and we're excited to have you part of our team. I'm sure the guys will make you, guys and women in the Fire Department will make you feel welcome. And now, we're going to have another presentation by the Fire Chief.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to bring up, here he is, firefighter Jose Zambro. This is a remarkable opportunity and I couldn't be more proud of, I couldn't be more proud of Jose Zambro. So, on June 23rd, 2018, it marked the five-year anniversary of the Yarnell Brush Fire. Now, the Yarnell Brush Fire, there was a hotshot crew out of Prescott, Arizona called the Granite Mountain Hot Shots. Nineteen of the 20 members of that hotshot crew were burned over and killed in line of duty. One of the firefighters, there was a connection locally here and it was Kevin Wojak who was the son of LA County Captain Joe Wojak. Kevin was born and raised in Seal Beach and his dad was well-known throughout the community and had a lot of connections and Jose was one of those connections. And so, on the five-year anniversary, Jose decided to do something special. So, what Jose does is marathons and he runs marathons in full turnout gear. And he wears his SCBA air pack and helmet and he's on Facebook. His tagline is "Firefighter Joe." He's been throughout the United States running these marathons. And so, he decided to run a charity event where he was going to raise funds for the Kevin Wojak Memorial Fund. Those monies go to help kids, young women and men that want a career path that raises funds and helps those less fortunate men and women enter the fire service. And so, he decided to run from Bellflower, California, which is the LA County Museum, Fire Museum. That's where Joe Wojak spends a lot of his time when he's not on duty. And he ran from Bellflower, California to Yarnell, Arizona. 370 miles in six days. He did it by himself. Seven days. I exaggerate, sorry. That extra day was something, huh? He did this by himself. He had a small team of support, his wife driving an RV with his kids, but he didn't have a big team behind him. What he had was a huge heart, determination and spirit. I would like to show you a quick video clip. It's about a two-minute video and then Mayor Pro Tem, I believe there's a proclamation that we'd like to read, but ultimately just acknowledge the incredible efforts of Jose Zambro and what he did here.
Thank you, Chief, and Councilman Nichols is going to read the proclamation.
On June 23rd, 2013, at 5:36 PM, a wildfire was started by a lightning strike near Yarnell, Arizona, a town of 700 residents about 80 miles northwest of Phoenix. The Granite Mountain Hot Shots from Prescott, Arizona were dispatched to fight the fire. On June 30th, 2013, the fire pushed from 300 acres to over 2,000 acres. Driven by strong winds, high temperatures and erratic fire behavior, 19 of the 20 Granite Mountain Hot Shots were caught in a burnover and died, making it one of the most deadly brush fires in US history. And one of the Granite Mountain Hot Shots killed in the line of duty was Kevin Wojak, a 22-year-old from Seal Beach, California. Kevin was the son of Los Angeles County firefighter Captain Joe Wojak, whose family started a nonprofit organization to carry on the legacy of Kevin by helping young men and women participate in fire explorer programs. And on June 23rd, 2018, El Segundo firefighter Jose Zambro initiated a memorial run to help raise funds for Kevin Wojak's Explorer for Life Association. Jose started in Bellflower, California and ran 370 miles over seven days, arriving at the site of the Yarnell burnover on Saturday, June 30th, 2018. And firefighter Zambro ran the entire 370 miles in full turnout gear, wearing his fire helmet, air tank and carrying an American flag. He averaged over 50 miles each day and ran most of the route by himself, picking up supporters at various spots throughout the route. The memorial run consisted of long stretches along desert roads within the Joshua Tree National Park where temperatures exceed 105 degrees, but Jose never wavered and completed the run as promised. Now, therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of El Segundo, California, do hereby recognize firefighter Jose Zambro for his incredible efforts, dedication, endurance, physical and mental toughness, and most importantly, compassion towards the 19 Granite Mountain Hot Shots killed in the line of duty.
I'm not much of a speaker, but I want to say thank you to our City Council, our Fire Chief, the Department, Police Chief, everyone in here. Thank you so much. But once again, this is not for me. I didn't do it for me. Once again, I said it time and time, it was for those 19 men, for their families. One thing that I realized when I was done with all this, it was not a life that we lost on those guys. It was a lifetime. Those men, they were sons, they were brothers, they were husbands, they were fathers. And at the end, that's what I wanted to honor. I wanted to honor each one of those men for their life, you know, pay the ultimate sacrifice for a community that they love. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for everything. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jose. You truly bring honor to our town and I'm sure your brethren within the Fire Department really appreciate and support your efforts. So, thank you very much. Any other comments, Council?
50 miles a day is pretty impressive.
Yeah. All right, on to our third presentation. We have Chief Wayland.
Well, just to begin with, Chief Donovan, that was a fantastic presentation and you've got an outstanding cadre of firefighters in your department. That was, that was pretty spectacular. I am here, Council, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, to introduce our cadets to you. I've talked a lot about them. We've been in here many times talking about how we want to recruit and retain people and continue to get to where we need to be and I've talked about how we need that farm league. We need that ability to bring people from the ground up and talk about the way we are here in El Segundo and how we want them to be members of our organization, provide them the training, the opportunities to do that. And so, while, when I started a year ago, we had three cadets. Under your commitment to public safety, we've now expanded that to 15. We have nine on roster right now. I believe we have seven here with us this evening. The other two had school commitments and couldn't make it. But I thought it would be worthwhile to introduce to you our cadets, the ones that are out there doing a lot of this heavy lifting. And in this, in this venue, we've heard, I've heard many times about return on investment. That's something I think from the dais we hear quite a bit. And of many positions, this is one where I think you'll agree to me, agree with me, there's been a significant ROI. And since, just, not that we have quotas, but since January of 2017, the people you see in front of me have brought in almost $700,000 in revenue to the city. And that, that's exclusive of all the times that they've worked duties which would have otherwise been officers on overtime. Traffic control duties, towing cars, all the things that they do day in and day out without complaint. And that has really taken the burden off of the police officers so they could go out and do other things. And so, and I say that amount, that lion's share in 2017 was done with, with three. So, now that we have nine and soon to be hopefully 15, I expect that greater things will be happening with all of these folks. So, I'm going to go by, by order of seniority to introduce them to you. Some of them you may have seen around, others will be new faces, I'm sure. Michael Drohan, he is our most senior cadet. He's been with us for three and a half years and he is an El Segundo native, or not native, but a graduate of El Segundo High School, currently attending She down on the end there, okay. That is one of our newest cadets. She attended Woodyer High School. She was a volleyball player. I'm not a volleyball person, but it says here you were an outside hitter. I don't know if that is, I don't know what that means actually. So, she's an outside hitter. She graduated from Rio Hondo College and is currently a junior at Cal State LA, criminal justice major. And she also was an explorer working for the San Gabriel Police Department. So, Cadet Heredia. And unfortunately, our newest cadet, Cadet Mendoza, cannot be here. He's a senior at Cal State Los Angeles, and they did have school tonight, and so he was unable to make it. So, I appreciate you bearing with me. Now, I know typically when we do these introductions, everybody comes up and says something. In the interest of time, I have asked the most senior cadet to address council briefly.
Thank you, Chief, council. On behalf of all of us cadets, I want to thank you for your continued support. It really means a lot to us, and because of that, this is a wonderful place to work. So, thank you.
Do you want to take a picture? Yeah, so we'll come up and take a picture. Thank you, Chief, and we are very excited to have the cadets in the cadet program. I guess a word of, word of advice to the residents, pay attention to the parking, parking signs going forward. But thank you. You know, it's important that we continue to, that we continue to grow our cadet program so that we have, you know, invite people into the field of policing. And I know it's been a challenge to fill some of those positions, so it's nice to see the youth engaged. And we're very excited to have some local, local representatives here. So, welcome to, and thank you to all of them. Any comments to anybody else?
I just wanted to make one comment. It's crazy to think that there's $700,000 in revenue in ticket writing from cadets when we as a city, on street sweeping days, we don't enforce the entire two-hour no parking. If the street sweeper's already gone by, they let us park there. And it's something that I truly appreciate as a resident of El Segundo, because you go to other cities, and it doesn't matter if it's no parking from eight to 10, and the street sweeper already went by, they still tick it. So, thank you, cadets. Thank you, Chief, for that direction, but I can't believe we still have $700,000 in revenue. It's crazy.
All right, so now we're going to move on to roll call. Councilmember Nicole?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Councilmember Brand?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Pertser?
Here.
And Mayor Boiles is absent. Which I have to tell you, he is watching because he sent me a text saying, you know, that he's paying attention. So, you can take him away, he's out of the city, but you, he's still paying attention. All right, so now we are into public communications. At this time, in the agenda that we provide, an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the city, the city council, on any items of interest in the public that are within the jurisdiction of our city council. Additionally scheduled, the public can comment on any public hearing item on the agenda during the public hearing portion of such item. But we actually are asking anybody who wants to speak on items one through four to hold off and speak during that public hearing so that we can have you part of the record. And we have Mr. Swanson. He's up at the podium already.
That might be past bedtime, I don't know. Ron Swanson, 629 California. Look at the quality of the people that were, that are coming to El Segundo. I mean, that really is, I'm going to amend my statement before, it's going to make El Segundo greater. It really is. Look at the quality of people. One thing came to mind though, I think PD and Fire have a basketball game?
Yes.
An annual one, right. I think they ought to change it to water polo? Because not only Matthew, but Adam Cruz, who played here in El Segundo, was a water polo player. And they could take on PD, but I think PD would have a little bit of a problem with the gun belts and stuff. It would probably hold them down a little bit too much.
Maybe at our new aquatic center.
Great people. And another story with Jose, it was, it was a lot of fun to watch him do what he did. I mean, being an Eagle Scout and watching what he was doing for that explorer program was just commendable. I got the idea, when I was watching it, I sent a donation check out. Roundabout way of doing it, but if you've ever gone into Parker, Arizona, that's where he came across the bridge there. I sent an envelope with a nice card in it and the check, and it went to Parker Oral Products. Parker Oral Products gave it to the Havas who, can't think of the trailer park that's right there by the bridge. The operator there, the manager there, she in turn said, well, he's not staying here, but the fire chief lives across the street from me, I'll give him the envelope. And the chief gave it to him when he showed up at the station. So, it was kind of cool. A little, little note from, from El Segundo to keep him going. I'm here tonight because we're coming up to September, and 9/11 will be coming around the corner. And the Swanson family and S&amp;S Hardware will be once again hosting a lunch for the city employees. Your guys are invited too. The badge won't get you an In-N-Out burger, where the In-N-Out truck's going to show up. You're going to have to get a wristband from Mickey. But we, we welcome all the city employees that day to honor 9/11 victims and our great city employees. I just think it's the right thing to do and at the right time, and I guess I got to get an encroachment permit here coming up, but we'll worry about that coming up. But Mickey and the city have been working for us to be able to pull this off, and that truck will pull up at around 11 o'clock on 9/11, and I think lunch gets served around 11:30, so we hope to see you there. Thank you again for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Ron.
Hello. Paul Lany, 518 Wedding Street, 14-year resident. Mayor Pro Tem Pertser, the council members, and the chamber. Thank you again for your continued efforts on part of the city. A few meetings ago, we spoke about the social host ordinance, and you asked Chief Wayland to meet with a number of people in the city, float some ideas around, talk about what the social host ordinance could entail. We have done so with Cheryl Smith and a number of organizations in town who are curious about how to help children not drink and smoke pot, or to reduce the risks therein. And I think that Chief Wayland has put together with the city attorney a very reasonable ordinance that has taken into account various aspects or positions on social host, and what the responsibilities are for children and their, and their parents. And so, I would like to encourage you to vote to have this pass. It is important for the city. I understand that we don't want to make city government larger and larger and larger, but it is important to protect the kids, and I encourage you to vote aye. Thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Chris Kegel. I'm with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, and here today to bring you your fourth quarter report. And for those that may not be familiar with us, we help people find jobs and help businesses find workers, and we do it at no cost for the citizens of your community. And wanted to also mention, we have a unique thing we do over at the Los Angeles Air Force Base. We actually have an office over there, and we help the military professionals transition out when they're, when they're being discharged and get into jobs in the community. But they have a really interesting program there that some of your constituents who may be listening that own businesses would be interested to know. And they have a program where for a military person that is within six months of their discharge, they will allow that person to leave the base while still on the military payroll, and allow that person to work at one of the businesses in town. So, it's a great way for a business or a nonprofit to get an experienced person to help them out for up to six months while the government pays their salary. So, if you're interested in that, you can let me know. My number is 310-970-7700. And also, I wanted to let you know, you may have received an invitation to come to our alumni event on November 1st. That's when we profile all the different success stories that have come through our office, the people we've gotten jobs or businesses that we've assisted. And the community's invited to that as well, and you can find out about that at our website, sbwib.org. And also, for, for those of you that may want to get reacquainted with what we do, we have an orientation coming up on September 26th that you're all invited to as well. So, I'll drop this off with the city clerk. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking everybody here for their service. To some familiar faces, hi. My name is Joy Alke. I live at 425 Richmond. Since 2009, I have worked with some incredible people at Heal the Bay in producing their annual beach report card. And you've probably heard about it. It's the one that's in the news at the beginning of every summer, and it's kind of well-known for ranking the top 10 polluted beaches in California. I won't beat around the bush. It's about sewage. It's about potentially dangerous bacteria in our waters. During the spring of each year, I start getting the numbers and the data, and I start analyzing the grades. As usual, LA County's most pristine beaches are way up north in Malibu, or they're down south in Peavy, where there's just not a lot of people. This year, LA County had only one single monitored location that got perfect grades all year round, just one. And that was El Segundo Beach, right here on Grand Avenue. You know, it'd be easy to rest on laurels and say, you know, hey, our beaches are clean, we're fixed, we don't have to deal with this anymore. But it's really important that we maintain our vigil in protecting our beaches. It's an ongoing task, and especially when we're facing federal EPA cuts and the threat to our state's environmental protections. I'm coming to you to remind you that coming up is the National Coastal Cleanup Day. It's going to be held on Saturday, September 15th. This is the largest single, largest volunteer event in the country. Last year, volunteers picked up 800,000 pounds of trash in just three hours in the state of California. And it's not only about removing trash from our beaches, it's really a great opportunity for the kids to learn about ocean stewardship. They learn firsthand that the lollipop sticks that they drop on the curb end up in the oceans and then end up on their beaches where they are playing. They learn that volunteering is fun. They learn about caring about the environment, and hopefully these lessons will stick with them for the rest of their lives. I'd like to thank the council for letting me speak tonight. If anybody is interested in signing up or registering, it's really easy to do, just go to healthebay.org, and it has all the information right there. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Cheryl Smith, and I'm over on Kansas Street. And I just wanted to come as representative of PTA council for El Segundo and say how much I have enjoyed working with Chief Wayland. He has been an inspiration to us with regards to the social host ordinance. He has been amazing, and he has taken every feedback that you, the council, have given him, that we, the PTA, and the people have given him, and he has come up with a comprehensive plan in addition to the city attorney and the city, the city manager, in order to come to something that will work for everyone. We have heard your comments and your feedback. We have had outreach to the community via Facebook, via a meeting right here where we welcomed the community to come in and, and talk to us and tell us about their needs. And it has been a really inclusive project, and I think we have come up with an amazing ordinance that is a little different than everybody else's, but really fits El Segundo. And I'm here to say thank you for him and for the teamwork that has been behind this. And I also want to note that the road organization and the other organizations that represent other drug addictions, they have been amazing. If you guys had been, and I'm telling the whole community this, if you had been at the last community outreach meeting, it was amazing. There was somebody here who actually had an issue, and Chief Wayland reached out to him. He got him resources. Our community reached out to him and got him resources. And that's what this ordinance is about, is about helping kids to get off drugs, to realize how harmful that, that drinking and alcohol is. So, I would ask that you please pass this, so then that way we can reach out to more people. It's more of a deterrent. We're not here to make money off of this. It's a deterrent, so then that way these kids can understand the error of their ways and hopefully right their wrongs. So, thank you very much for this opportunity. I hope you say yes, and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Any more public communications? Okay, at this time I'd like to close public communications. I do want to say a couple of things. I want to say thank you to Ron on helping, sponsoring the 911 lunch for the employees. It's really generous of you and your company. And I also want to thank Paul and Cheryl for really partnering with the community and bringing the community together to ensure that we work with Chief Wayland on coming with the best ordinance possible for El Segundo. And I also want to give a shout-out to Joy from Heal the Bay. Joy is the one that recognized that our name, when she was looking at the grading of the beaches, that they were actually going to state it as Doc Wyler and not Grand Beach. So, thank you to her diligence. El Segundo got the true credit that they deserve. So, thank you for being protective of our town and looking out for our town and making sure that we got the true credit. south in Peavy where there's just not a lot of people. This year, LA County had only one single monitored location that got perfect grades all year round, just one. And that was El Segundo Beach, right here on Grand Avenue. You know, it'd be easy to rest on laurels and say, you know, hey, our beaches are clean. We're fixed. We don't have to deal with this anymore. But it's really important that we maintain our vigil in protecting our beaches. It's an ongoing task and especially when we're facing federal EPA cuts and the threat to our state's environmental protections. I'm coming to you to remind you that coming up is the National Coastal Cleanup Day. It's going to be held on Saturday, September 15th. This is the largest single, largest volunteer event in the country. Last year, volunteers picked up 800,000 pounds of trash in just three hours in the state of California. And it's not only about removing trash from our beaches. It's really a great opportunity for the kids to learn about ocean stewardship. They learn firsthand that the lollipop sticks that they drop on the curb end up in the oceans and then end up on their beaches where they are playing. They learn that volunteering is fun. They learn about caring about the environment and hopefully these lessons will stick with them for the rest of their lives. I'd like to thank the council for letting me speak tonight. If anybody is interested in signing up or registering, it's really easy to do. Just go to healthebay.org and it has all the information right there. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Cheryl Smith and I'm over on Kansas Street. And I just wanted to come as representative of PTA Council for El Segundo and say how much I have enjoyed working with Chief Whalen. He has been an inspiration to us with regards to the social host ordinance. He has been amazing and he has taken every feedback that you, the council, have given him, that we, the PTA, and the people have given him, and he has come up with a comprehensive plan in addition to the city attorney and the city manager in order to come to something that will work for everyone. We have heard your comments and your feedback. We have had outreach to the community via Facebook, via a meeting right here where we welcomed the community to come in and talk to us and tell us about their needs. And it has been a really inclusive project and I think we have come up with an amazing ordinance that is a little different than everybody else's but really fits El Segundo. And I'm here to say thank you for him and for the teamwork that has been behind this. And I also want to note that the ROAD organization and the other organizations that represent other drug addictions, they have been amazing. If you guys had been, and I'm telling the whole community this, if you had been at the last community outreach meeting, it was amazing. There was somebody here who actually had an issue and Chief Whalen reached out to him. He got him resources. Our community reached out to him and got him resources. And that's what this ordinance is about, is about helping kids to get off drugs, to realize how harmful that drinking and alcohol is. So I would ask that you please pass this so then that way we can reach out to more people. It's more of a deterrent. We're not here to make money off of this. It's a deterrent so then that way these kids can understand the error of their ways and hopefully right their wrongs. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I hope you say yes and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Any more public communications? Okay, at this time I'd like to close public communications. I do want to say a couple of things. I want to say thank you to Ron on helping, sponsoring the 911 lunch for the employees. It's really generous of you and your company. And I also want to thank Paul and Cheryl for really partnering with the community and bringing the community together to ensure that we work with Chief Whalen on coming with the best ordinance possible for El Segundo. And I also want to give a shout out to Joy from Heal the Bay. Joy is the one that recognized that our name, when she was looking at the grading of the beaches, that they were actually going to state it as Doc Wyler and not Grand Beach. So thank you to her diligence. El Segundo got the true credit that they deserve. So thank you for being protective of our town and looking out for our town and making sure that we got the true credit for that. And I do also want to give a shout out to Chevron because I know Chevron really pays attention to that beach. And there was an issue with trash there recently and they've up there, they put out more trashcans and they've actually swept the beach more. And thank you to the community who actually every Monday go down and start picking up trash down at Grand Beach. So thank you to all those who make sure that all their efforts have made us have a grade A-plus beach. Any other comments? Okay, so on to our procedural motions. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion? May I have a motion and a second for the... Okay, I did that one. Okay, so now we're on to special order of business. Okay, so we are going to be talking about... Sorry, turn page.
Smokey Hollow.
The Smokey Hollow. And at this time, we're going to be merging item, in discussion, we're going to be having a presentation on item number one and two together. And we will be voting on them separately, but at this time, we're going to be talking about them together. So we have Greg McLean from our planning department is going to be giving a presentation.
And I need to step out based upon a 500-foot boundary-location conflict.
Okay. Oh, so this is the time and place herein to fix for a public hearing. Consideration possible action to conduct a public hearing regarding environmental assessment number EA 1011, general plan amendment number GPA 13-01, zone change number ZC 13-01, and zone text amendment number ZTA 13-01 for the Smokey Hollow specific plan update project. The applicant is the City of El Segundo, address Smokey Hollow, fiscal impact none for this action. And then at the same time, consideration possible action to conduct a public hearing regarding city council approval of environmental assessment number EA-1198 and zone text amendment number ZTA 17-06 to establish a parking-in-loofy program in the Smokey Hollow area and to adopt a parking-in-loofy, address citywide. Applicant City of El Segundo, fiscal impact none with this application, with this action. City manager?
Mayor Pro-Tam, members of council, staff's been working on both these projects for several years.
Oh, sorry. I forgot one thing. We have to say, city clerk was proper notice of a hearing given in the timely manner.
Yes, it was.
All right, city clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
It has not.
The public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will make this presentation?
We have a group presentation. Real quickly, these are both projects that staff's been working on for several years. A great deal of work's gone into tonight and leading up to tonight, including quite a bit of public outreach, changes to the plan, discussions with Caltrans, changes to the mitigation measures. But we're here and I think we're finally at the finish line with a product that we believe addresses a lot of the things we heard throughout the process. Greg McLean, our planning manager, is going to present this. We also have representatives from the consulting company that helped us with this. The chairman of your planning commission is here, I believe, to speak on this item. And I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you. This is going to be an uncharacteristically long presentation for me, so I'm going to recommend that if you have questions along the way that you actually interrupt me and take them because it would be easier than flipping back through the presentation later. So this is for the Smokey Hollow specific plan initially. The boundaries are shown up here. I think we're all familiar with that, so I'll just blast through it, except I want to point out in two areas. In the center of the screen, you'll see some dark blue areas. Those are areas that are not in the current Smokey Hollow specific plan that we're adding. That amounts to a parking lot, the, right there, the unofficial park is here, and this is the giant sinkhole. And the other bit is the city yard. We're adding those. What we're taking out is this area up here, which has been activated as residential. Smokey Hollow will not have any residential going forward because the boundary is being moved to exclude this area. So the specific plan update process, this goes, this was activated years ago, but it became much more active again around 2015 and 16 when existing conditions were studied. There were stakeholder interviews. There was a community meeting that occurred. I know, have a little bit more on that in a little bit. Then in 2016, around the time that I came to the city, we entered into the visioning and the alternatives phase. And again, another workshop was held, very well attended. It was in this room. And alternatives were presented at that time and the community got a chance to vote on their preferences. Since that time, we've been working primarily on the draft plan and the environmental impact report that goes with it. Again, there was another community open house that was held at Big Door Studios. It was again very well attended. And here we are at the final stage, public hearings and adoption. This went to the planning commission a couple of months ago. It was approved there unanimously. So this is, just to remind everybody, the first public workshop in 2015 or 16? 16, I think it was early 16. And this is reminiscent of our second workshop where we presented different alternatives and the community voted and they got to see in real time how their votes were tallied. Here's an example of that. Third workshop at the Big Door Studio. This was one of the presentations. There were several that night. We also had this big area with displays and staff sprinkled throughout there to answer people's questions. It was a very good event. So the specific plan is structured in five chapters, it's shown up there. I'll go through each of these briefly. First of all, the vision, the guiding principles. I know it's difficult to read, but so I'll just read them off quickly. The vision principles for the Smokey Hollow plan are to promote a vibrant Smokey Hollow, support infrastructure and improvements, preserve Smokey Hollow's mid-century industrial feel. We feel that that's very important. We don't want to change Smokey Hollow so much that it's not Smokey Hollow anymore. Develop parking solutions. That was a consistent theme throughout all of the public engagement. Encourage land uses that support the district's vision, but also are reflective of the trends and the way things are changing out there. Define an alternative and distinctive image for Smokey Hollow. So we want to build a place on top of what we already have out there. Want to build on our strengths and give the place a coherent identity over time. Provide connections between the destinations for all travel modes. So we're going to be looking at focusing not only on automobiles and their parking and transportation, but also bicycles, possibly scooters and pedestrians as well. And we want to emphasize flexibility, creativity, and innovation, not only in the uses and the people that are bringing these ideas to us, but also in how the city responds to those things. We're introducing a new level of flexibility that we haven't seen in Smokey Hollow in the past. So let's look at the private realm. This is private property issues that are addressed in the specific plan. So roughly, the left side or the west side of Smokey Hollow has a little bit different character than the east side. And that dividing line is in the block between La Mida and Maryland. And so there's a little bit different approach to the two sides. And that's also reflected in the current specific plan. We didn't move that boundary. So let's talk about permitted uses first. All of the industrial uses and studio uses that are in Smokey Hollow currently will still be there. We're not removing any of them other than what you'll see at the very end here. General offices are already permitted, but they have a size limitation. We're going to remove that cap. And that would apply to what's known as the creative office market as well. Restaurants are allowed there currently. We're going to ask that they get a conditional use permit to operate, with the exception of takeout restaurants, which we want to encourage. Those would just be allowed. Assembly halls have peculiar impacts, so we're going to suggest a conditional use permit to address those on a case-by-case basis as well. Parking facilities, meaning strictly parking lot, would be in the P-zone. Some of the area near the center of the Smokey Hollow is the P-zone, so that would be ideal for parking. A couple of uses that are going by the wayside, self-storage, doggy daycare, auto repair, body shops, those are no longer going to be permitted uses. I will say though, that all of those uses that are already established will remain. They'll just become non-conforming. They can stay for as long as, as long as they can stay in business, they can stay there. They can be replaced by similar uses as well. So this is not, there's no amortization to get rid of them. They'll just become non-conforming. With regard to development standards, I'll spend a bit of time on this. The first change is the floor area ratio, which is the ratio of the size of a building relative to the size of the lot that it sits on, is going to go from .6 currently to .75 on the west side and from .6 to 1.0 on the east side. The important thing here is that it'll be calculated on the gross square footage instead of the net. And that's rather important in that it becomes a lot simpler and it also eliminates a lot of what we call the game-playing. The trend now is that most floor plans are open floor plans. We don't have distinct rooms anymore. So to call some area storage and some other area office and some other area, you know, something else is almost meaningless because in a moment's notice, everything can be moved around. And yet we play this game all the time now because that's the way our code is set up for calculating all kinds of things. And we're going to just basically say, whatever within the exterior walls is going to get counted. That's why there's a slight uptick. In reality, .6 to .75, if you're going from net to gross, really has no impact. It may be a slight, very, very slight advantage to the property owners. 1.0 is an improvement though, and that's one of the examples of where the east side gets treated a little bit differently from the west side. We're introducing a new concept called the Community Benefit Plan. This is, it's similar to a variance in that it allows property owners and developers and businesses to exceed certain development standards. But in order to do that, the mechanism is through what we call the Community Benefit Plan. And they will provide to the community certain benefits, which I'll get into a little bit later, some examples. And for now, the mechanism to deal with that would be with regard to FAR, up to 1.5 FAR with planning commission approval. Now, that's not to say 1.5 is given. It means up to 1.5. So everything is a negotiation point. And if someone needs something more than that, then that has to be approved by the city council. We're on development standards. Building height, it's 35 feet now. We're proposing 35 feet with up to 50 feet for a community benefit plan. Currently on the east side, 50 feet is attainable with lot consolidation. We're not encouraging lot consolidation anymore, so we're changing the mechanism from that to a community benefit plan. So that's no change. This would be additional height on the west side, though.
This question, this 50 feet, Greg, is, that's approximately four stories, I understand?
Yes.
And why the need to go above three stories? What would be the justification for that?
Well, part of it is to make the FAR feasible. A lot of the developments that we're seeing proposed in the area, both small, medium, and large, well, all three, are looking for much higher ceilings. The new standard, I don't remember the exact number, it's something like 16 feet. It's very high. And so even though the buildings will be somewhat smaller, I mean, excuse me, somewhat taller, the number of stories remains roughly the same. You can, as I said, you can get to 50 feet right now with lot consolidation. And if you did a traditional building and you did partly underground on the first floor, you're talking five stories. So this is not that much of a change, but we are seeing a demand for higher ceilings, which means you can't, you can't really even do three stories in 35 very well in that area.
So you might just get three stories in 45 to 50 feet?
You, yeah, you might, but that would probably not because to get to 50 feet, you'd have to, you'd have to negotiate that with us, with the planning commissioner, the city council. And if you don't need 50 feet, I mean, you're not going to have like, you know, like 20-foot ceilings probably, but if you wanted to, I guess you could with this program. But it's, it's subject to a future approval. It's not a guarantee. And 50 feet, mind you, is also the upper limit. We can settle on 48 feet or 47 feet or 45 feet, whatever is appropriate for the area.
And where in the process is that decision made? Do those come to council or are they made at the department or at the planning commission?
Most of those will be at the planning commission level. There are triggers that would take it to the council level. And I'll get to that on a future slide.
And going that high could result in additional employees, which has implications for parking?
Well, as I said, all of these are not guaranteed. This is all a negotiation. So if that is the implication, then the city would not necessarily be prepared to grant that unless additional parking was accounted for as well.
Community benefits would be defined with each transaction?
Yes, it would be similar to a development agreement where all of the terms would be spelled out. What is the city gaining in exchange for the additional height? We are not specifying what qualifies as a community benefit. We're deliberately leaving that a little bit open-ended because we're not sure that we have all the best ideas right now. And what may work very well on one property may not be the best answer on another property. And that would be a decision that either the planning commissioner or the city council would make based on their familiarity with the area rather than something that staff would decide.
Thank you.
Moving on. Some changes to the setbacks. Currently, the front setbacks in the area are four to 10 feet. We're proposing zero. What we're trying to do is get the buildings closer to the sidewalks to, well, that's self-explanatory. We're trying to energize the sidewalks and having a landscape buffer there is not necessarily going to do it. We feel there's better places for landscaping. The sides remain unchanged at zero. One big change, though, is at the rear. Currently, it's between five and zero. We're going to suggest 10 feet if you're adjacent to, I'm sorry, it's currently five feet. We're going to suggest zero unless there's an alley. If there's an alley, then we're going to say 10. And the reason for that is that we see the alley 10-foot setback as a flex space that people can use for different purposes. And I'll have examples of this in a little bit, but somebody may want to use it as a loading zone and somebody else may want to have a basketball hoop there for their employees to take a break. And any other, any other uses that are otherwise legal could be there. Vehicle access, this is mostly unchanged. No new curb cuts permitted along street frontages. Existing curb cuts to be removed for new buildings in most cases. Loading spaces is a big change. This is reflective of our times. We're currently requiring every property to have a loading space, which is rarely used in most cases. Sometimes they're used and we're not prohibiting loading spaces. So if anybody needs a loading space, they're more than welcome to have one. But most are not using them. And so we're going to stop requiring them. Now, again, that goes back to the alley 10-foot setback. If somebody wants to have a loading space available occasionally, they can use that. But we're also finding that most deliveries now are done on a small scale, usually from a white van that just parks on the street. Guy runs out, delivers, runs back in before anybody tends to do anything about it. And that's just the reality. So it doesn't make sense to require a dedicated plot of land on everybody's property that is rarely, if ever, going to be used. And more often than not, we're approving overlapping with parking anyway. So we're just going to suggest that we eliminate that. We are going to be exploring options to have common loading spaces on each block out in the street. There'll be painted curbs loading for the entire block. It may work in some cases, it may not in others. And in some blocks, we may need two. We'll explore that as we go to the street improvements. The other thing I wanted to point out, though, is that restaurants and very large buildings will still require loading spaces. Parking is another very big change. This goes back to that discussion I mentioned earlier about playing the games with how we define the interior spaces. So currently, we add up all of the different types of interior spaces and then come up with the sum of all the various parking requirements. And as I said, it's not realistic when you have an open floor plan to actually designate different areas within that open floor plan and expect that it's going to stay that way. So we're proposing a very simple approach where we just do one parking space for every 400 square feet gross. So it's easy to calculate. As it is now, we have to back out the restrooms, back out the vents, you know, the utility rooms, all the other stairwells and all kinds of things and come up with a net. This would just be simple. We just do the outline of the building, calculate the area, one per 400. In the aggregate, it probably won't amount to any change compared to what's out there right now, but it will make this much easier for property owners and architects and so forth to design around. It'll also make it much easier for the staff to correct, to check them. So for non-conforming properties, they don't have to change their parking situation until they make significant changes to the occupancy. So this is important. If you make, if you change a... If you, if you make, if you change a use from one building code occupancy to another, then parking has to be to code. But if you're just changing from one zoning use to another within the same occupancy, that can happen freely, and it's very similar to what we have going on in downtown. And it should make everything a lot more fluid and remove a lot of the restrictions to change that we see. Bicycle parking, sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit, consistent with the green building code. Now, I'm going to divert a little bit and talk about the parking in lieu program. So the need for parking solutions was a consistent theme from the beginning of this project all the way through. The reasons are obvious. Small lots, for the most part, we have a very high parking demand out there. We have very little street parking available. And there's a lot of different ways that parking can be addressed. One is you can increase the parking requirements. And then what may appear to be counterintuitive, you can reduce the parking requirements. There's two schools of thought, and they compete with each other throughout the country. For decades, the first option was the one winning, but more and more, the second one is. I think what we'll do is we'll just resolve that issue sometime in the future. But I just wanted to point out that that's one thing to consider. Parking demand management reduction strategies, that's a long-term goal that we do intend to explore. Management of existing parking supply is a possible option, but we're not proposing that right now. What that basically means is paid lots, for example, or parking meters. That's not part of this proposal right now, but it is something to consider in the, in the future. The last, the next one is increased public parking supply. That one is what in lieu parking is about. In reality, the solution to any area's parking problem is going to be some combination of these things. So an in lieu parking fee program provides an optional way for property owners and businesses to meet their parking requirements. So in a nutshell, if they need, let's say, twelve parking spaces and the property has ten, they're short two, the in lieu option would be that they would pay the city for those two spaces. And then they would, they would meet their requirement through payment. So the city takes those funds and puts them into a special account to be used for building parking within the district. And street parking is generally more efficient than private parking. So it's a benefit pretty much everywhere, all the way around. The only exception would be the person who, who expects there to be a parking space for them every time they go. It may not be the case. So we, we did studies, and we've determined that the cost of building street parking is about twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars per space in that area. And that includes, it sounds a little high, but that includes rebuilding curbs, making streets one-way. I'll have the details about that in a little bit. The striping, some landscape improvements, bulbouts on the corners to shorten the crosswalk distance and things like that. Altogether, it's about, excuse me, twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars per space. And we're recommending two ways of collecting that. One would be full payment upfront. So one-time fee, and it's cleared, and then thereafter, it runs with the property. Or fifty percent upfront plus ten annual payments. It would be a way of making the burden a little easier for some, especially for smaller businesses. Other recommendations that we're including would be that full payment and directorate level review for those cases when somebody wants or needs to buy more than fifty percent of their requirement. The other would be that we, we will regularly reevaluate this program on a number of fronts. One, just to make sure that it's working. Two, to make sure that we're not overcharging or undercharging. And also, as we get close to fulfilling our, our construction goal, we would either have to suspend the program or come up with other, other things that we want to fund, you know, other parking lots, for example.
I have a question, Greg.
Yes.
So we have the, the in lieu parking for the downtown area.
Yeah.
And has that been successful? Or has there been some issues with that as far as collecting the fees? And like, has there been consistency in how we're applying that?
Yes, pretty much all of those. There has been a little bit of, well, the downtown program was somewhat undercut by another action, which I think was also a correct action, and that was to allow restaurants to freely go into places that were formerly retail without incurring additional parking. That would have been probably the largest source of, of demand. And that was removed by to make that change. That was a trade of one, one good program for another. There have been mostly successes with the program. It has not been widely used, but where it has been used has been used to good effect. There is at least one case, but that was a very special case that was approved in a, in a unique way, let's say. Nobody else has that program. And that one has been a bit problematic and is a code enforcement issue, but that's not even possible under the proposed Smoky Hollow in lieu program. So I don't anticipate any similar problem to that.
Dovetailing on that, did we see any issue with, well, correct me if I'm wrong, the downtown in lieu program allows for a twenty-year repayment?
I believe so, yes.
And previously, had we looked at only asking for upfront payment if more, if they were going to go in lieu on more than fifty percent of the slots?
You mean in downtown or in?
In, in Smoky Hollow.
Yeah, we considered only a hundred percent upfront, but I think the thought was that at twenty-seven, six hundred per space, it's, it could be a considerable burden for a small business if they needed, say, four spaces. They've got quite a lot of money. So we were looking for a way to, to, you know, make it a little bit more, I don't know, affordable.
Was there any thought to any scale, depending on how many spots that were going to be purchased in lieu, about at what point that would trigger it down a, a greater amount upfront?
Yeah, we decided to simplify and just say that if you want to buy more than fifty, that option goes away. And otherwise, or fifty percent. If you, if you're under fifty percent, then you can choose which of the two options you prefer. We're, we're trying to make this as administratively benign as possible. We've also considered many tiers or, and we thought, we thought of a lot of options, but we wanted to make it as absolutely simple to administer as we possibly could so that the program doesn't basically cancel its benefit by costing the city to operate.
And then the, the ticket price of twenty-seven thousand, six hundred, is that a really doable price? Or, I mean, if we lowered it, would we be, have higher compliance and people be more willing? Like what, what?
Yeah.
I understand, like, the calculation to get to the twenty-seven thousand, but it is a high number. And if it was fifteen thousand, would it be more palatable? And would people be more up to, you know, bring businesses that?
Yeah.
You know, like, because one of the things we're trying to do is attract businesses, and we don't want to, you know, turn them off because we have this huge price tag on a parking space.
That's correct. And if we did lower the price, we would probably have more takers. Then you run the risk of creating traffic problems faster and parking problems faster than you can correct them. But we're, we recognize that this may not be the perfect number, and it may be too low for some circumstance and too high for, that's why we have the reevaluation of the program built into it.
There are, Mayor, Pretending Council, there are some legal issues tied to that also in that these are required parking spaces, and so to the extent that this is, as I understand it, the actual cost that it will cost the city to provide that parking. So if the city underwrites that cost, then that will trigger other legal requirements for these properties as far as paying prevailing wage for construction and other issues. Also, it will require the city then to fund the delta. So the, the amount is, is based upon the actual cost of, as I understand it, the initial spaces will be the cost of restriping the streets and the, the diagonal parking, all of those improvements.
And then is there any, like, cost break if you, like, buy five or more?
No, we considered it. Actually, we'd, we'd almost considered going the other way. A price break for buying fewer and a price increase. We, we considered it both ways. And again, for the sake of, of keeping the program simple and easy to administer without having to bring someone on, basically, to administer it, we decided to offer it up as a very straightforward and simple process. In, in the future, if, if it doesn't have, you know, much popularity, if it's not taken advantage of, then we can come back and revisit all of these issues because there may be, you know, things that we can do to make it work better. We're reasonably confident that this number will work. And we've talked to a number of developers, and most of them have responded like, yeah, that's fair. I can do that if I needed a few spaces. That's not a problem. So our recommendation is let's put it out there and then keep a close eye on it. And we'll come back with if there's any problems or if it's too successful. So moving on. Go back to the Smoky Hollow specific plan. Let's talk about the public realm. And these are, these are the improvements that we hope to be making over the next many years. So we'll start with El Segundo Boulevard. This is the proposed layout. It looks very similar, but you'll see one very important difference is right along the north side of El Segundo Boulevard on the westbound lane, we're proposing to put parking there. As I said, all along, parking has been the number one issue, and we're looking for opportunities to provide street parking. And this is one because by, by reducing these three lanes width slightly, which, which as a side benefit, we hope will, will cause drivers to drive slower around El Segundo Boulevard. Typically, that is what happens when you narrow lanes. But, but a slight reduction there, we can get enough to do a parking lane along the north side of El Segundo Boulevard. We, I'm sorry, I forgot the exact number right now. How many parking spaces that was? I think I downgraded. I think it was in the seventies.
Seventy-four.
Yeah, we originally, we know that we, originally, we'd planned on a hundred and one, but we decided to pull some out so that we could ensure even better visibility for people trying to make a left turn onto the eastbound El Segundo coming down from the north-south streets. So when we take all those out and paint those curbs red, it comes out to like seventy-four or something likely to be, to fit in. But seventy-four additional parking spaces in Smoky Hollow is, is nothing to sneeze at. That's pretty significant improvement, we feel.
It would actually improve the visibility of someone turning left.
It actually would because you would be able to pull out about eight feet further and without pulling into traffic, which would get you past the buildings, which sometimes block the view right now. Yeah, that's for the people who want to make a left turn and head.
It's pretty difficult now
Yes, it is.
to come off of a north-south street and make a turn onto El Segundo Boulevard because of the speed of travel and the issues around visibility. So I, I have some problems with this recommendation, this part of the report to, to change that. I'm not so sure it's going to make it better. It may make it worse. And I'd be more supportive if we tried it out, maybe in the west section, and not started in the east until we see that the west works and add that later if it does. I really don't want to create a situation where somebody gets broadsided coming down the street west.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we, we can probably work with the Public Works Department to come up with a plan like that because this doesn't involve any widening of the right-of-way. We're working within the right-of-way that we have. So it makes sense to approach it that way. And just so everybody knows, the timing of this is probably on a three-to-five-year horizon because El Segundo Boulevard is scheduled in that time to be redone. And it doesn't make sense to go out there and, and, actually, you can't really even scrape the, the lines off and repaint them. They have to, they have to be ground off. And so in talking with the Public Works Department, they said, well, they have a program to come to the street in about three to five years. And that would be the time when this, this change would be implemented. And I think that it's something that still has to be designed, and it's a very good suggestion to try a portion of it and see how it works.
I'd be interested in what the incidents of accidents have been the way it's currently set up from our police department.
Yeah, it's currently set up much like a freeway. It's a very fast street.
Yeah.
So again, we're, it's been shown that when you narrow lanes, it does cause drivers to go slower. And so we're hoping to see that happen. But incidentally, though, we're not proposing to, to narrow the, the lane closest to Chevron because they've asked us to leave it the way that one is so that they can get their trucks out without crossing into the other lanes. And that's, that's fair. So we're just proposing to narrow the other three lanes. Okay, so moving on from there. Grand Avenue, very slight change proposed, but it may be significant. Again, within the existing right-of-way, our proposal is to move the white dash lines on both directions, one foot in toward the center. And what that does is it narrows the, the inner lane, the number-one lanes, but not, by only a foot. So they're still going to be compatible or compliant. But it makes the outer lanes one foot wider, which makes them just that much safer to be shared with bicyclists. And then you can see we're proposing sheroes, these little diagrams that are painted right onto the street. It alerts drivers that this is a shared lane with the bicyclists. So the way that works would be when the cars are parked here during the day, the bicyclist would ride near the white stripe. And when the traffic is flowing, then the bicyclist would move to the curb. And there's enough room in that lane for cars and bicyclists to operate side by side safely. That's the proposal. Now, this Grand Avenue is scheduled to be worked on, I believe, next fiscal year. It's very soon. And we're going to try to find a way to assist in the design process to make this come because they were already planning on putting bike notation out there, bike route signs. So this is a very minor modification to what they were proposing to do, which we just found out recently. Franklin Avenue is the backbone of Smoky Hollow. We're not proposing to, to close it or anything. It still will function as a street. What we're looking to do here, though, is to make it a more friendly street for alternatives as well. So we're looking to improve the sidewalks, also to make this more amenable to pedestrians and bicyclists and scooters. But we're also looking at, at some decorative crosswalks. These are just samples of what we could do. We're going to propose bulbouts on the corners to shorten the distance for pedestrians to cross. You'll also see some painted bulbouts. These are on the next slide. I'll show you a little bit what that's about. We're proposing to introduce street trees onto Franklin, maybe a little bit at first, and then maybe more later. Eventually, coinciding with whatever schedule Public Works has for, for fixing up the street, maybe at some time in the future, we could get a special pavement treatment out there if there's money for it. So we're looking to make Franklin a somewhat of a, a slow-speed highway through Smoky Hollow to connect Smoky Hollow to downtown on one side and to PCH on the other side. When we have, hopefully, in the future, bike share programs, this would be a perfect place to operate bike share operations. We can have docking stations and so forth. That's all long-range thinking. Now, the north-south streets, you know, in order to fit it on here, it's sideways relative to the other streets. What we're proposing is head-in angled parking on one side of the streets and making the streets then one-way. Now, it's important to note that we don't know which way most of the streets will go. It'll kind of depend on, on which ones get done first. We think we know which way they should go to get the most parking spaces, but that may not be the, the most advantageous in, at the time. It's going to depend on, on what's on the street, how it's used. But the idea would be that we'll do several streets in conjunction with each other, and they'll have alternating north or south orientation. And then we'll provide this angled parking solution on one side or the other. And it's not shown here, but maybe in a place like this, there could be a loading zone for the block. There's, it was considered to do back-in angled. We rejected that at the second public meeting on the basis that a truck with a long bed may, may pin somebody against a building or something. So we're going to do head-in angled parking. That's the proposal. This is primarily what will be funded by in lieu parking. Fees. So this will be done on a schedule according to how fast the fees come in. So we can't tell you if there'll be any of it done next year or the year after. It will depend on how many in lieu fee we sell. And, and then that will also determine where the work is done first. So if a particular block has a lot of in lieu activity, then that will probably be our first block we'll, we'll schedule construction on.
And then, Greg, if we completed all of these changes on changing the north and south streets to one-way, how many additional parking spaces will we gain?
That one is eighty-five, I believe. Yeah, some of the eighty, eighty additional, eighty-five additional spaces. Now, there are. eighty-five additional spaces. Now, there are two or three streets we don't intend to make one way. And I apologize, I've forgotten which ones they were at the moment. But it's not every single street, but that's in your, in your packet showing which ones would be one way. So the eighty-five additional spaces would be the net increase because there's parallel parking on both sides right now. So when you count, when you subtract those from the total that's built, the, the net increase is about eighty-five.
And the eighty-five is in addition to the seventy-four
That's correct.
from El Segundo Boulevard, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we feel that there's an opportunity to make a pretty significant addition to, to on-street parking. Okay, now this is an illustration of what I was talking about with the alleys. So this is the alley here where the truck in the middle is. This is representing the ten-foot setback at the rear adjacent to an alley. And you can see in this case, this example, they've got an outdoor lounge area for the employees on this side, and this person's using it as a loading zone. This is a flexible space, but this is just to give you a sense of, of what we had in mind there. Parklets are something that we would want to explore, possibly as a pilot program, maybe especially along Franklin Avenue. These are just some examples. The types of parklets we do may, may or may not resemble these, but provides opportunities for outdoor seating. If there's a, if we get a restaurant in the area, that may be an incentive to, to try to propose something like this. They can be built in the, in those spaces that I was showing you earlier with the hash lines painted on the, on the, on the pavement so they don't take up parking spaces if, if parking spaces are needed. It's just something that we want to explore at some point.
And these are things we were talking about bringing to downtown as well.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to explore that in both places.
Could be also a public benefit.
Yeah, the, the city managers pointed out this could be a, a form of a public benefit. Someone could offer to do this for us. And if we, you know, can come to terms on what it should involve and where it should be, that would be an example of a type of public benefit that we could consider. Exceptions, I wanted to point out that we did add late administrative adjustments, up to 10% deviation for numeric development standards. So that would be things related to, say, setbacks, the dimensions of parking spaces, landscaping, so forth. It's not intended to apply to parking because we have the in-lu option. And it's not intended to be a replacement for public benefits. That's why it's limited to 10%. The community benefits plan, a little more details. There's a two-tier process. So tier one would be approved by the Planning Commission, and that would be for building heights up to 50 feet. That would also include FAR up to 1.5 and other deviations that are above that, that adjustment level. Tier two would be FAR above 1.5. There is no option to go above 50 feet, so that's not included. And tier two would be approval by the City Council. So if somebody asks for three or more deviations, and one or more of them included height or FAR, that would be a City Council action. And the idea there is just simply that when you start asking for that much, and it's going to have that kind of impact, that that's a decision that needs to be made in this forum. But otherwise, the Planning Commission would be the hearing body for community benefits plans. So some examples of community benefits plans, we, we thought of publicly accessible open space, somebody could dedicate a portion of their property, say ideally at the corner, near the sidewalk, maybe make a little parklet, seating place, some shade. That would be a benefit to the community. Bicycle lockers would be, you know, publicly accessible bicycle lockers would be an example. Publicly accessible parkings, there is actually consideration of building excess parking for properties and then making the remainder, the surplus, available to the public through an agreement with the city. Streetscape improvements, that would include parklets, for example, but more permanent improvements. Public art is another option that we would consider. And then I put et cetera because we're not really confident that we've thought of every good idea. Somebody may come to us with something spectacular that we never thought of and say, yeah, let's do that. Kind of hope that happens, actually. A big part of the, of the specific plan or the design guidelines, and those are available online for everybody to look at. So I'm not going to dwell on these. I just want to show some examples of how the plan is set up. It gives a concrete example of something that we want to see, and then it gives a lot of little pointers. And each of these tags are linked to descriptive paragraphs explaining what qualifies what, what this is and what how to, how, how to design this into your project. So this is the design section, the guidelines. And there's, there's a lot more to it, and I just gave a few highlights there. So implementation, there's a lot of actions at the back of the specific plan. There's, I think, thirty of them. These are things that we will want to explore in the future. And I've given a couple of examples up there. I'm not really going to go into it, except for number twenty-one, established parking in Lufi. That's a suggestion of the specific plan. We're already on that one, obviously. But the other ones will be things that we'll look at. Maybe possibly working with the lunchtime shuttle, change the route, maybe expand the hours. We think that it makes sense to run that through Smoky Hollow, for example, instead of up and down Grand. Maybe Grand one way and Smoky Hollow the other way. We explore these ideas. So these are just suggestions for things to come at in the future. Some ideas for funding of projects. We already have impact fees. We'll be exploring those in more detail in the coming months. Parking in Lufi's will fund parking-related improvements. The community benefits plan will result in direct expenditures in the, in Smoky Hollow that the city doesn't have to, to do or done on our behalf, I guess. And there's other agreements that we can come up with. Things that we want to explore in the future would be special assessment districts. Not saying that any of this will happen, but this is stuff that we can consider if there's a desire within the community to explore community facilities districts. Enhanced infrastructure financing district, it's a somewhat new tool that California has provided, but not really well-used right now. I think a lot of people are waiting to see somebody do something really good with that. Even business improvement districts would be an option. There's a lot of options we could consider. So now at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over for the last several slides to Genevieve Shero from MIG. She's the consultant project manager and led the team that developed the specific plan, but she's going to talk about the environmental impact report.
Good evening, council members. And I also wanted to say that we also have tonight here Brian Marchetti with KOA, who is on our team. And he did all of the traffic analysis. So if any particular traffic questions come up, he's here to be a resource as well. With regard to the California Environmental Quality Act, this, or SEQA as it's usually known, we usually see environmental impact reports and other environmental assessments done for actual construction. But the law also requires it to be done for land use plans, such as a specific plan. So for this project, we completed an environmental impact report. And this describes the potential environmental consequences of the plan were it to be built out. And it looks at sixteen different topic areas, like air quality, noise, traffic, utilities, to see what kind of impacts would result from new development that could happen in the district based on the land use plan. It also looks at some kind of changes, or it calls alternatives to the project, and assesses the impacts of those. So the EIR found impacts to be mostly less than significant. It offered mitigation for certain items. And it found three significant and unavoidable impacts with regard to largely traffic, and they're all kind of linked out from traffic. Greenhouse gas associated with traffic, noise levels near PCH associated with traffic, and traffic on PCH. So the EIR was drafted and was available for public review back in the spring for a forty-five day comment period. We received five comment letters from the Gabalino Band of Mission Indians, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, the California Department of Conservation, Caltrans, and Sandstone, Sandstone Properties, local property owner. With regard to the Caltrans comment letter, we, they requested additional analysis specifically, looking at the freeway. So we went back and looked at the freeway in addition to the analysis of the district and around the district, and prepared and recirculated draft of the traffic section of the EIR. That was available for public review between June and early August. No new comments were received on that, including from Caltrans. So it would appear that they are okay with the revised analysis. The final EIR was drafted, and that includes the draft EIR, the recirculated EIR, and then the final EIR, which takes any changes that were necessary to the draft environmental impact report, the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and kind of a track of, of the communications for the public record. So the consolidated environmental, environmental analysis is being considered tonight as part of the, the project. And if you have any specific questions about it, I'm available to answer them.
So that's the end of the presentation. So I guess if you have questions, this is the best time.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute recess before the public speaks, and then we'll open back up with public comments. So we'll come back in eight-thirty-eight.
If you live in the city, go down Grand on Sunday night, you know one of the first morning hours, and they don't want to want to come.
Oh, no, that's right, you're out, I forgot about that. I forgot. Yeah, I forgot. Okay, yeah, we're ready to go. Okay, so at this time, we'd like to bring up public comments on items number one and two, and we have Mr. Swanson running to the podium.
It's time to go home.
Oh, yeah, this is for number one and two.
Right. I think it's in number one and two, but can you find the overall Smoky Hollow plan that's color-coded while I comment on something else? Parking on El Segundo Boulevard, not in favor of it. It's a disaster waiting to happen. One of the ways, right now, you could probably slow traffic down is maybe put a traffic light at center and El Segundo Boulevard. Let's try that. That would be great. That's, okay. Can you, you know where my property is, right? Can you point to that with your pointer clicker? Right? Right there. Those two buildings are light manufacturing, media manufacturing, but there was, in eighty, late eighties, early nineties, Carl will remember, they instituted an R3 overlay. That R3 overlay has been taken off of this plan now. I have a fundamental problem with that. Because I had plans at one time, you know, when I go to retire, I build a building someplace in town, and I take that and put that, my property, and turn it into a residence even for myself or rental. That devalued my property. The one to the east of me is owned by a trust, and I don't, they don't have a problem with this either, I don't think, because it really doesn't impact anybody. The rest from, point to the right of the big one. That whole area there, down to Kansas, that was all manufacturing at one time, and it had an R3 overlay to it. Guess what it is now? It's R3. They encourage people, and Carl and I talked about this before the meeting, and I've talked to several people, they encourage people to, when they decided to sell their properties, developers could come in, and the whole idea was to create a residential buffer on the north side of Grand. Now you've taken that away, and I have a fundamental problem. I was not notified of this. There's, I don't even think it says it in the plan, that the R3 was lifted from my properties, from my property. It'd been nice to know that, because you're changing it. There is no harm or foul to put it back. I'm not moving my building, but if I wanted to, I can scrape it and put in without changing any zoning. And proof in the pudding is the ones that are to the east of us that have been developed, the Work Live, the Work Live Lofts, the Grand Tropez, and Elan Point. Those were all dilapidated buildings at one time. The property got sold off, R3. So, I just need, I know to change it now would be an inconvenience and a big expense, I would think, but, because we talked this morning, but I just need a commitment from the city that in three or four months, they can put that R3 overlay back. What I heard from several people that have talked about this, well, R3 doesn't fit in Smoky Hollow. North side of Grand is chocolate ice cream. The south side of Grand is vanilla ice cream. They don't mix. It's totally different. You can't count my parcel and the one next to me the same as you count south of the south side of Grand. So I just need an assurance from the city that we can reinstitute the R3 overlay to those two properties. Doesn't mean they're going to change, but we have the right, which I've had the right for the last twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and now all of a sudden it's taken off because they say it doesn't mix with the Smoky Hollow plan. We shouldn't even be in the Smoky Hollow plan, to be honest with you. The only reason they're there is because of the two industrial buildings, which one's mine. So, I just need to get an answer on that eventually. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other public?
Good evening, council members. My name's Jerry Bauer, and I'm a property owner in Smoky Hollow on El Segundo and Eucalyptus. And I'm actually just trying to get more clarification on the In-Lu parking program. I still don't understand, I think, the mechanics of how it's going to be rolled out and sold to the business owners in the area. I have confusion about that. Are you saying, is city planning saying that you will approach people on a street-by-street basis, and then depending on the kind of response you get, you'll go ahead with improvements or cha, I guess I should say changes on those streets? That's my first question, so I don't know how it's going to be sold to the business owners, because my concern is that if people on, let's say, Street A, twenty percent of them buy into the In-Lu program and eighty percent of them don't, then where do their employees and customers go? I'm concerned that they will then move over onto other streets. And I can tell you right now that on Eucalyptus, I would say, and I actually have been collecting pictures over the past several months, just to prove my empirical thought, I would say that probably eighty percent of the people who park on our street every day during business hours do not do business on that street. Most of them park there and walk up to Grand to businesses. They walk over to other businesses closer to town. We get a lot of vans and vehicles from some of the, I don't want to name names, but some of the larger commercial businesses that have nowhere to park their vans. So I don't under, I guess I need more clarity on how this In-Lu program is going to be rolled out. Is it going to be done all at once, or, as you said, maybe on a street-by-street basis? And I'm kind of worried about how the dominoes might fall in that regard. And then my, I guess, so I'm curious if anyone has any answers to that. And then, just while I'm here, my other question about El Segundo Boulevard is, although I love the idea of having, I think you said seventy-four new parking spots, my property does butt onto El Segundo Boulevard, and I can tell you, we're very close to town, we're at Eucalyptus, and people are flying even down there at fifty, sixty miles an hour. And I think, as Mr. Swanson said, unless we have probably a traffic light or two and some, you know, other traffic mitigation, some kind of stop signs, it's dangerous. We have a lot of alleys in that area, a lot of blind spots coming out onto El Segundo Boulevard, and I think we really need maybe a more comprehensive traffic plan to really make that part of the plan work, at least on the west side of El Segundo Boulevard. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but Colonel Yori, United States Army, retired. I live on Grand, so does my tenants, so do all my neighbors. If you ever drive by on a Sunday night on Grand Avenue, there's no cars. Why? Because every one of us are parking somewhere down the street, because we all know at six o'clock, the parking Nazis are going to nail us. Why do we have parking restrictions Monday through Friday from where it was posted, six to eight, four to six? Where do I park, and where do my tenants park? The only time I could really find parking, along with my tenants, on Grand Avenue is on a Sunday night. Everywhere else on Grand Avenue, all my neighbors all park on the side streets. We are taking up all the north and south parking spaces. Really should start looking at having Grand like a regular street, just no parking, one day a week for street sweeping. You could keep the bike lanes, which is good, it would also slow down the traffic. All my tenants, all my neighbors, all the people behind me have consistently called the police department to complain about the speeding on Grand. It is just as bad as El Segundo. No one slows down. There's kids cross the street at the school, at the batting cage, no one stops. I think if you allow the tenants, the residents, and the business owners, and, sorry, the property owners, to actually park on Grand, you would actually force the people to actually slow down. And it would also be nice if the council could actually order the police department to actually enforce the laws. I lived in the city for thirty years. When Shell was here at the old Starbucks, you remember, you couldn't see, always saw a police car there, they always were stopping someone on Grand. It was great. You called 911, they were there. Now you never see, I'm retired, I pretty much run about sixty-eight miles a day, just up and down the street. I never see a traffic stop, I never see anything. I complained and complained. So, all I could say is, this traffic thing for Grand is nuts if you keep it the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. My name is Kimberly Christensen, and I'm here on behalf of one of the property owners in Smoky Hollow, Sandstone Properties. They own about five acres of land in the center part of Smoky Hollow, kind of near the dividing line between the two proposed zoning districts, along the Maryland and Franklin intersection. And so they own a sizable portion of the specific plan at sort of, I think, a key location. They've been very involved in tracking the progress of the plan over the past few years, and working with staff in what the vision and goals of the plan are. They support the plan as currently drafted, including the development standards, design guidelines, and all the components, including the boundary changes, which would actually affect parcels that they own. I want to speak briefly on a few key issues that I think are important for context. The community benefits plan is something that Sandstone strongly supports, because they believe it's an opportunity for many of the property owners in the specific plan area to offer something to the community and to the city in exchange for increased opportunities for FAR, and things that are unique to their parcels. One of the challenges for property owners like Sandstone and many properties in Smoky Hollow like them is that their properties were developed, buildings were constructed under different zoning regulations that were in effect before the Smoky Hollow plan existed. And as a result, this wasn't brought up this evening, but when the Smoky Hollow plan was adopted in 1986, it essentially actually downzoned the previous zoning that existed in the exact same boundary area. And so, as a result, a lot of properties were developed at higher FARs than what the current plan, which allows only a .6 FAR allows. So Sandstone, their property, for example, is developed at a .8 FAR existing development. So what happens is you have non-conforming situations where it's very difficult for property owners to pursue any kind of modernization, renovation, or rebuilding of their property, because they're not going to remove buildings or portions of buildings if they are not able to replace that square footage. So, that's one of the reasons they're very enthusiastic and supportive of the proposal to increase the FAR to 1.0 for the Smoky Hollow East Zone. And they believe that they have a unique opportunity and ability to potentially offer some benefits that would help out the Smoky Hollow plan area, assuming this plan were to be adopted. And so, they believe that that, along with some of the challenges that property owners face with changing topography, which also affects height, and to address council member Brand's comments earlier, the fifty-feet limit is really crucial for three major reasons. The first is, in order to achieve the 1.0 FAR, that's a pretty critical number. In fact, we would have liked to seen it actually a little bit higher at fifty-five or sixty feet. In the case of Sandstone's property, there's significant topographic changes from one side of the property to the other. And so that adds to the cost and challenges in design, and being able to get access to parking and things like that. So, the second reason staff alluded to is that the current market trends are for, a lot of tenants desire the, you know, greater heights, and sometimes it's not limited to just the first floor. In many instances, as our architectural team has elicited, that sometimes the second or third floor may also have a need for higher floor heights, depending upon the nature of the business, and that has become a very desirable thing in terms of what creative office tenants in particular are looking for. So there's really a host of factors on why the height can become an important issue in conjunction with the FAR and making them work together. And with that, again, we support the project and want to thank staff in the city for its efforts on this very important plan. Thank you.
Any other public comments? At this time, I actually would like to ask Ryan Baldino, our chairman of our Planning Commission, to come up and speak on the ordinance.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Ryan Baldino, chairman of the Planning Commission. We had a hearing on this, it was June 28th. Planning Commission overall was happy to see this finally come to fruition. It's been a four-year trek since this process started. Couple of items I want to mention that came up during our hearing was, there were a lot of questions about why removing the R3 zone from those parcels. I think it was Michelle Keldorf said why this doesn't make any sense. Sure, maybe they're not used now, but fifty years from now, who knows? And with respect to the height, there was a developer who came in and said, if I don't get this height approved, I can't build my parking structure on El Segundo Boulevard. So there was at least one stakeholder who was adamant during the Planning Commission hearing, that they didn't get that height approved as part of this Smoky Hollow plan, that their project for a parking garage would not even be possible. The other issue that really got a lot of discussion was, the plan allows a granny flat, 500 square feet, for someone to live on a property, and the question, the Planning Commission, was why not allow live work? Why not open it up to more residential options? What we were told was, if we do that, we would have to take maybe three steps back to reanalyze those things. Apparently, it wasn't something brought up during all these meetings. And I would like, again, compliment staff at the amount of participation. You know, to get a hundred people to come to an event to talk about a zoning amendment is fairly impressive. As you know, from a lot of city meetings, it's hard to get that kind of stakeholder input at these things. So, glad to see that they did reach out to the members of Smoky Hollow and get that participation. From the Planning Commission point of view, we did approve it, we thought a lot of good work went into this. Concerns about removing the R3 zone were addressed. Concerns about maybe, you know, could we go further with residential in Smoky Hollow, but we were advised by staff, maybe that could be addressed with the housing element further down the road. And then, just wanted to highlight that there was a specific property owner who said, without that height being adjusted to fifty feet, they would not be able to complete their project, which was a parking garage, and we definitely need more parking. So, other than that, I'm just here to see if you've had any questions or anything to ask of me, and that's really all I have as far as comments.
Any comments? Any questions, Don?
Sorry.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so that will close public hearing. Council discussion?
Can we hear from the traffic consultant, if possible, about concerns about speed? As the traffic study looked at, that was the speed, El Segundo Boulevard addressed, and similarly, were the ingress and egress for these extra 150 parking spots? How do we plan on them leaving the city? Just, I think the public would be edified by hearing that from what we've talked through.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and council members. And the question, council member, is for El Segundo Boulevard? Is that correct?
The two prime ones are the speed on El Segundo Boulevard, which is a recurrent topic, speed concerns on it, and how we think that this parking plan would influence that. And then, once we, if we were to adopt north-south parking, when all of those extra cars, if we talk about putting 159 new slots in, how we plan on them getting in and out? Because traffic control was one of the key parts of the environmental impact review, particularly around the intersection of PCH and El Segundo Boulevard.
Right, and what we did for the specific plan was looked at a number of intersections, mainly the always-stop sign locations and the traffic signals, because those are the crunch points in the network, that's where the capacity comes down. So we looked at those locations, we provided input to the design process for El Segundo Boulevard, Grand Avenue, et cetera. The speeds on El Segundo Boulevard were reviewed as part of the design process, I don't recall what they were. Obviously, there's concerns over that, but as was stated by Greg, the narrowing of lanes does produce a speed reduction effect, but there may be other measures that may be researched in conjunction with that. There are other always-stop signs, it's not great to just put them all the way down the street, that's an option, other traffic signals as well. All of that doesn't mean that the on-street parallel parking spots would not work, but perhaps we just need to take one final look at that as part of implementation. The test of the parking kind of in the lower volume segment makes a lot of sense, to do a test of that, to see if that does work. But the goal of all this, as stated, was to provide additional parking supplies, so, yeah, providing those extra spaces on El Segundo Boulevard does provide that relief, provides a way for businesses to develop and to use that parking. But I understand the concerns that were stated, and I've noted that, and I think it's just something to consider for implementation.
When I look at the traffic flow, do you anticipate most of these vehicles leaving by El Segundo Boulevard, or do you think half will go north on their one-way street to Grand and leave that way? Because I know there's, we had a public comment about Grand as currently a designated truck route and allowing parking on there. Do we anticipate a lot of these vehicles will be leaving on Grand for higher utilization there?
Yeah, because the regional routes are obviously the Sepulveda Boulevard, north-south, the 105 freeway, but El Segundo Boulevard is a four-lane road, it provides a lot of capacity, and you can get further into the beach cities to the south on El Segundo Boulevard. So, we have a distribution assumed in our traffic analysis, I don't remember the split between Grand and El Segundo Boulevard going east-west, but I assume it would almost be half. But it's also split in a number of directions, including Main Street going up to the 105 corridor as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it was important, you know, the traffic study was a big part of the preparation for this, and I think a lot of people's concerns are, how does that look? And they don't sit through, you know, a hundred hours of eye-bleeding overlays like we do. So I think it's important to have the rationale and logic spelled out about what would this conceivably mean for you? And as we roll this out, you know, we have obviously a lot of speed concerns for El Segundo Boulevard. What does that look like, and what mitigation measures have we explored or looked through, and how many stop signs, and where and when? Those are just important things, I think, for the public to hear. Those are just important things, I think, for the public to hear.
Don?
Yeah, on the 50-foot potential height issue, I'm not okay with that yet. I might get okay after working some more on the issue with staff, but I'm not there yet. On the parking on El Segundo Boulevard, I'm not there. I'm not sure I'm going to get there. Very concerned about visibility coming out onto that road, the speed on the road. I don't think it's a logical or safe way for us to obtain additional parking spaces. So that is a continuing concern of mine. The overall plan and all the work on this is fantastic. It's way better than what we have or have had. It's great. I salute everybody who has worked on this. And I'm sure we'll be able to find a way through those couple of issues for me. But I don't think it'll be tonight. Thank you.
Can I just echo Don briefly? I think that this is an important step in the evolution of how we continue to respond to the market and engage the economic vibrancy of the city. I think the work is phenomenal, and the vision behind it really looks out for some of the key things that we, as citizens and voters and people who live here, I mean, we like our current businesses there, and this protects their non-conforming properties and their ability to stay vibrant and viable there. It addresses some of the direct business and merchant interests in parking, and how it changes the ratio for that, and still looks at a way for us to build capacity for parking. I think, like Don, I share some concerns, maybe slightly different. I know that we have, you know, we'll have conditional use questions that come from some of these really nice event spaces, and how we bring them into compliance with fire codes and things like that. I think the caretaker piece, as planning talked about, and what the nature of those caretaker flats look like, I think that's something that we'll continue to have to talk through, much like the parking pieces. But overall, I think we've got something really good. I have, I will take one piece away from that, in that I share a big concern as we look at our state interests on any time we remove an overlay or capability to say that we have parking, or, excuse me, that we have residential in the part of town, that the only part of town that we allow residential in, that is something that we get banged on by Sacramento all the time. And if we have key dugouts in here, and that's spot certainly on Kansas, where that is a large segment that has that overlay, I think we really need to think about, any time we remove that on there, the message that sends when we try to go to battle with larger interests who have concerns about our willingness to add housing capacity. So even if they're not used, even if it's not used, that capacity out there is something that I think we need to think hard about. And I know that the staff is sick of hearing me say that.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we address some of the questions that came up. I know Jerry brought up a question about the, there's some, she wants some clarification on the parking. So if we could reach out to Jerry at that, you know, and let her know what that, what those questions are?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to add to my questions, and if I don't know, and it's part of the plan, pardon my ignorance, but these additional 156 spots, are they all considered in lieu parking? Or it will be a combination of public parking?
No, actually, none of them will be in lieu.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, basically, I think what if, if someone wants to build, they would, then they don't have the parking capacity, they could buy one of those spaces.
So they have the first option?
Yes. No, no.
I, well, there's two, there's, yeah, there's two processes going on. In lieu is just the mechanism for us to gather the funding to build the parking. The second process is the actual building of the parking.
Right.
So the person that buys in lieu does not buy a right to a space. They buy the right not to build a space. And they're not entitled to a space that we build on the street unless they get there first. So, right. What they buy is essentially that forgiveness of having to build that on their own property. But that space will be built on the streets, and so it adds to the supply to the public. So I hope I'm not wrong, but I believe that Ms. Bauer is confusing these two things and combining them. And so I will take your direction, and I'll try to make.
Reach out, right. And then, as far as, so as we move forward to move, approve, you know, if we approve this or not approve this, the issue of the overlay on the residential, I do feel it's kind of interesting that just because there happens to be a commercial property there, we cut them out versus all the other properties next to it already were built. So it's kind of like, just because they weren't built yet, it just seems kind of odd that those two buildings were part of this specific plan. And then, as far as parking on El Segundo Boulevard, obviously, you know, this, if we did approve this plan, we don't have to implement all of this, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not like we're going to be, and it has to have a date. This is, we are allowed to if we elect to.
Yes.
And we have the money to.
Yes.
Which we don't have the money at the moment.
Now, the difference would be, though, to the extent that those spaces are to be funded by in lieu, the in lieu program may end sooner if those are not implemented. Because once we hit the dollar amount to build, I mean, to compensate for what we intend to build, we'll stop the program. So if we take the El Segundo out of the equation, then that program would just end sooner. It'll just be concentrated on the north-south streets.
Got it. So, okay. So we can, if we did approve it today, we're not guaranteeing that we will be building parking on El Segundo Boulevard. We can say, you know, at the fur thought, we may not want to.
Right. It's part of the plan, but it's not a requirement.
Got it. Okay, so I'm going to close council discussion. And city attorney will read the resolution for title only for number one, right?
Yeah, I want to make the point that in this particular situation, it's not a majority of vote. It will take all three of you to approve this. And so I think I heard Councilmember Brand said he's not ready to move forward this evening, if I understood that correctly. And so the question is, do you want to proceed? Or do you want to bring this back in two or four weeks? Or maybe I'm misreading Councilmember Brand's statement.
Well, there's, are you, are you?
No, you got it exactly.
So are you, are you not for number one and two, or just number one or number two?
What's one?
Because there's two.
Yeah.
Oh, there's, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So is?
We're on one now?
One.
Just one, just one, right?
Just number one.
Yeah. Not prepared to go forward with one.
Okay, so.
One, so that we're clear, one is the specific plan portion. Two is the parking in lieu. I'll defer somewhat to Greg's here, but I think without one, I don't know.
Can't do number two.
I think they're tied together.
Yeah, you know, I think staff's recommendation on this is that these are, these are some important issues to the plan and the plan's success from staff's perspective. They're, they may result in changes to the document. So I think we'd have to reopen the public hearing if we make changes probably anyways.
Well.
So my suggestion was going to be that we continue this until the second meeting in September. Allow staff time to work on better explaining the need for the 50-foot height and what those impacts might be. Hopefully, explain the layout and the potential improvement to visibility and some safety concerns that we might be able to address related to the El Segundo Boulevard parking. We'll develop an option for council to potentially direct us to address this residential overlay issue. I think that's going to be a longer-term fix. But you, I think the request was that we at least come up with a plan to address the residential overlay and how that might be fixed in the future or reinstated in the future. Again, I think, it's been a long process. We'd like to wrap it up, but it's an important process, and we'd like to get it right. So I don't know that another 30 days is going to be the end of the world here.
Any comments?
I think I clearly misunderstood one spot of this in my eternal haranguing of questions. Or is the, is the overlay piece excisable from that? Or is it because it's a part of the map that it requires?
If you're going to change that, if you take it out as part of this action, then to bring it back will require another planning commission hearing and city council hearing.
Oh, the reinstatement, yes. But if, there's no option to approve this plan with that Kansas property. And I didn't even, I didn't even notice the Nevada properties. But that spot on Kansas, and for that matter, any of those, if we wanted to arbitrarily say, yeah, we approve this, but with that dotted line going straight down Grand, does that, is that a substantive enough change to the plan that it requires?
Well, it's a little bit more complicated. We can put it back in. And we, as staff, have no objection to doing that. However, if you do it now, that does substantively change the analysis, and it will cause additional delay. And it would also cause a contract amendment with our consultant. So our recommendation would be to give us direction to address this as a new code amendment in the near future. We can start on it right away. To come back and reinstate a version of that overlay that is very similar to what's out there now. That way, we can rely on the environmental impact report that would, by then, be approved, hopefully, and do an addendum rather than do, you know, a complete reanalysis of that part. So my recommendation would be, give us direction to write a code amendment addressing the overlay, and we'll do that. But not to, not to try to reinsert it back into the plan at this point.
If I could ask this question, is it the will of the council to maintain the R3 on those, that property or those two properties?
I don't want to speak for everyone. I just know that we sat up here a month ago and dug a moat down on PCH about where we're going to allow residential. And any time that we show something that says, it begins to make us look like we don't want anyone new to live here at all. And I don't think that is at all a reflection of our social mores. So I think that if there's places that have Rs on our map that are in the place that we let people live, that we, you know, it's in our interest to sort of maintain those. I will heavily caveat that with, I am comfortable with addressing it further, further down the road in the interest of, I haven't lived in El Segundo as long as most people here, but I know the entire time I've been here, this plan has been percolating. So I have a child who is going to Richmond Street, who is the same age as this plan. And I would be very eager to see it move forth and not wait until the first month of school.
I would like to talk with staff about the ability to make the change in this plan. With the question, that's why, again, is it the will of the council to keep those properties, those two properties as R3?
It would be mine.
I wasn't, to be clear, there's also a significant part of that on Kansas, which was where I was aimed at, this Nevada properties. I suppose all of those inclusive, but we're taking anything that we're converting above Grand or removing an R3 overlay.
Not every bit of it, but we'll map it out and include that in the next report.
Yeah, I mean, just it doesn't make sense for the two properties where all around it is residential. So, you know, you know, the two, it's almost like we just cut around them.
Yeah. Our intention at the time was to, was to remove residential from Smoky Hollow with the thought that those properties weren't going to be converted. But I think that Mr. Swanson made a very convincing argument that it should be considered to be put back in. So we're okay with that. We'll, if the council directs us, we will find a solution.
And how could that transaction go forward without the landowner being informed that there was a desire to change that? That seems wrong to me.
Well, there was no intention to hide that from, I guess maybe it just didn't come to his attention. And that's, it's not something that we highlighted. It was made, the point was made that this wasn't going to have residential and, you know.
You need to inform the homeowners in writing, you're going to do something like that. They shouldn't discover it surprisingly.
No, I completely agree with you on that.
So if we just, so just for clarification, for those two little properties where the cutout is where there's residential all around it, we'd have to, what's the simplest way to make that change so we could move forward with?
Well, subject to further discussions with the city attorney, the plan currently removes the overlays. The ordinance that accompanies the plan removes the overlays. And probably the easiest way would be to proceed along those lines and then to come back with a new overlay that does, that accomplishes the same thing.
For addressing those two, just separate.
Well, it's more than that. These properties over here as well.
But why does it have to be those properties?
Because those are the ones that have the overlay today.
They have an overlay today?
They have an overlay that allows them to convert to R3.
City manager and I were discussing that we'll figure out the easiest way to get from point A to point B, whether that can be done as part of this or not.
All right, so you'll come back to us with a solution? Because I do, you know, to Chris's point, we really need to move this forward. There's a lot of enhancements here that will really help many people, and I don't want to get it held up because of just a couple little things that, that are, you know, causing a little pain. And so your recommendation is that we bring it back September 4th?
The 18th.
The 18th? Okay, all right, so I guess we'll bring it back on the 18th. So does that mean we should not move forward with three and four, or?
Three and four are freestanding.
Freestanding, okay.
We can act on those tonight.
All right, so that closes one and two.
So this, the public hearing and this items, public hearing items, B1 and B2 will be continued to the second meeting in September.
So do I have to approve it?
You know, why don't you take a vote on that? It's a good idea.
Motion, so a motion, I need a motion to? Continue to September 18th. Options number one and two.
So I'm moved.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Okay, number three. Just real quick, Greg, will these, can he come back for three and four? So, real quick, though, do, in anticipation of time, it's 9:18, are three and four quite lengthy? Because I know we do have people in the audience waiting for the social ordinance host. And I'd like to, if we could, can we flip-flop the agenda?
That's your prerogative, but they're actually quite short. So either way, they're very short.
Okay. I mean, what do you think? Do you guys want to?
I only have one question.
Okay, I'm going to move that, I'm going to move the, can I change the agenda real quick?
That's your prerogative.
Yeah, I just, I think it would be unfair for us not to be respectful of people's time. Okay, so if we could just move forward with? Item number five. So I'd like to introduce, number five is consideration and possible action to introduce ordinance number 1567 to prohibit gatherings where underage drinking or illegal drug use occurs. Fiscal impact, none. And we have Chief Whalen here to talk.
Good evening again, Mayor Protam, council. This is, we have this under unfinished business. We brought this first on June 5. It was a part of a package with the loud and unruly gathering ordinance. And during the second reading on June 13, there was a decision made to bifurcate the two so that with the social host ordinance, we could have a little more conversation with members of the community and see if we can come to some understanding and address some of the concerns that existed out there. Cheryl and Paul both spoke this evening. Cheryl had to leave. But while I appreciate the kind words, they really did the heavy lifting with this. They were out there, engaged in the community, very involved with meeting with me, and very instrumental in to bringing forth what we have this evening, which I, I think you'll find, addressed the concerns that were brought forward at that time. So since this is, because there were substantive changes made, it was a decision that this would be a first reading as opposed to a second reading of what we discussed back then. Because we did, we did make some pretty significant structural changes. And since this is a first reading, just by way of explanation, the idea behind a social host ordinance is that we want to deter underage drinking. It gives us some tools that we don't currently have. There is some laws that impact drinking. It is illegal to, in public, possess alcohol if you're a minor. It is illegal to provide alcohol to minors. And so the police department does actively enforce those. We do work with other South Bay cities. We ask for and receive grants from the Alcohol Beverage Control. We do what we call shoulder tap operations, which is where we go around to businesses in town. And they call it shoulder tap because it's when you get an underage person to, "Excuse me, sir, would you go buy this beer for me?" Or conversely, we get underage people to go in as decoys, minor decoy operations, and they'll go in businesses and try to get businesses to serve. So from that standpoint, we try to curb the supply of alcohol to minors. The one area that we don't have effective tools is with dealing, is preventing the, or holding a host responsible for holding a party. Because as I mentioned, it is illegal for a minor to possess alcohol, but that doesn't apply on private property. for a minor to possess alcohol, but that doesn't apply on private property. That's only on public property. So, for a minor to have alcohol on, at a party, that's not against the law. A little bit by way of explanation, the evidence is pretty clear out there that, that minors' drinking is detrimental. The Surgeon General called to action to prevent and reduce underage drinking stated, "The underage alcohol consumption in the United States is a widespread and persistent health and safety problem." The Center for Disease Control and Prevention also talks about underage drinking and, and in part, they say youth who drink are more likely to experience poor grades, developmental issues, sexual promiscuity, suicide and death. And we could discuss whether nationwide it's trending up or down with drinking, but I think one thing that, that is, is relevant is the survey of our own kids here in El Segundo. In the 2017-18 survey of our middle school and high school, and I'm only pulling results from the high school of this, but 27% of 11th graders admitted to consuming alcohol. 30% of 11th graders admitted to using marijuana. And when asked the most prevalent place to get alcohol, 45% of 11th graders said parties. So, what we're trying to do here is, is make this a deterrent so that we won't have parties with underage drinking. Now, one of the concerns that we had or that was expressed with the original ordinance as drafted was that it was a little onerous for a first offense. Parents do what they can do. And if you remember, that original ordinance was you had to take reasonable steps to lock things up and so forth. We were a little bit worried about government intrusion. So, the significant change to this is, is how we structure a first offense. And the collective agreement was if an adult is present and there is underage drinking taking place, prima facie, they should have known, they should have prevented it, and that would be a first violation. If the adult is not present, we don't have that should have known component anymore, the reasonable step component, which is really very prevalent in all the other social host ordinances out there. We're, we're changing ours a little bit. And so, in order for ours to be a violation, a couple of things will have, have to have happened. First is minors are consuming alcohol and there's an obviously, or marijuana, and there's an obviously intoxicated minor who's present. What, the reason behind that is we wanted to eliminate the, I had a beer in my fridge and I go out to dinner and two or three, it would have to be three for a gathering, they get the beers out of the fridge and they're sitting out back having a beer. So, we wanted to say it's a party. The whole intent behind this is really parties, not the one-offs. So, there would be an obviously intoxicated person present. So, to walk you through it, police get called to a party, no adults are present, there's minors there, the minor who's responsible for the house, and there's obviously intoxicated people there, that would be a first offense violation. If it's not a violation, let's say minors are drinking, but there's nobody intoxicated there present, then it would be a formal warning. So, two warnings within a 12-month period would trigger a first offense violation. So, they would get one warning, the parents would be notified. So, now in effect, the parents are on notice that, hey, when you went away, when you went out to dinner, whatever you did, your minors got into your alcohol, they went out back and they, they had a gathering and they were drinking. So, we want to let you know that this occurred and take whatever steps now you deem reasonable to prevent this from occurring again. Like I said, if an adult is present and minors are there consuming alcohol and it's a gathering of three or more minors, that would trigger a first offense violation. A couple of other things that were changed that were in the first ordinance is there's no, there's not going to be any billing for response costs. So, the only fine is in fact the fine. The fines were lowered to a thousand for the first offense, 2,500 for a second offense and 5,000 for a third offense. The other key change to this was that on a first offense, at my discretion, we could allow community service in lieu of a fine. There was concern expressed that while some people could easily afford a fine of $1,000 to other people, it could be pretty significant. And some argued a fairness factor, if a child is, or a minor is the one committing the offense, why is it that the parent might be the one that's responsible for that fine? So, we, we do have that opportunity for community service for a first offense, but not on subsequent offenses. And I believe that concludes my presentation and I am available for any questions.
I just, I had a question. Under the summary of changes, a responsible adult means a person who is 21 years of age or older, but an adult is technically classified at 18 or older, correct?
Correct. Legally, an adult is 18. We're defining it as 21 and over to, to make that difference between the two. If there's only a minor that's there, somebody under the age of 21 who can't legally have alcohol, they get held responsible under one part of this. The, once it's 21 and over, then they're the adult that's present, then there is no, not a first offense. If there's somebody that's 21 years or older that's present on property and minors are drinking, it is a first offense violation as drafted.
And then my second question is, you made mention to this being a tool, a new tool in your arsenal, but there are laws already on the books. Do you foresee you and your police force not only issuing this citation, but also the other laws that are on the books, citation as well? Or how do you, how do you foresee that playing out? I mean, I know this is, the whole purpose of this is a deterrent, but I know there are laws on the books. Like, I'm, I'm not allowed legally to provide alcohol to a minor. And if I have, there is something on, on the books of law that you can cite me with.
Right. And so, that, that is a very, that's a specific crime, a specific intent crime, and you would have to demonstrate the elements of that crime, whereas this is you were there and it was allowed to happen.
Okay.
So, and I wouldn't anticipate both happening. In many ways, it's kind of a lesser included offense, but I, I would envision just one of these offenses occurring. And, and really, I ran, I ran the numbers. So, year to date, we've had, that I can tell, as best I can tell, because we don't code them a specific way, but there's only been six parties that I could find year to date where even this would have been applicable. So, I, I don't see this as a, as a massive, we're going out and writing a bunch of these citations now. Really, this is that education component. The school districts agreed to help distribute this information and put the word out. And this is allowing parents and kids to have that conversation that, hey, this can't happen, because if it does, there's repercussions.
And this is more of a civil, like a civil fine, not a, it's, it's civil?
Correct. This is civil, it's not criminal. There's no criminal record associated with this.
Chief, was that, was that six parties this summer or, or for the calendar year?
It's year to date, sir.
And how would this rise to a misdemeanor?
Yeah, year to date. Pardon me?
I think it's the second part of Scott's question. It could get to a misdemeanor. How would it rise to that instead of this fining system?
It wouldn't arise to an offense. It's only a civil fine.
I think we saw recently the Redondo Beach City Council declared this type of activity as a misdemeanor. Are you aware of their resolution or ordinance?
No, but I would, I'll defer to city, city attorney on this, but I think in some municipal codes, any violation of municipal code is a misdemeanor. Would that be why they said that?
That, that could be. I did read the article. I didn't actually look at the specifics of what they passed, but in theory, the, this could be, you know, this could be a misdemeanor, but I, our read, I'll, I'll speak for myself and look at his speed for himself, was that the intent was to sort of lessen the penalty with this, if you will, as opposed to increase it, but perhaps, I'd sort of read that from the council, I thought, from the last couple of conversations, but.
Okay, so, at this time, do we want to introduce the ordinance? Do I need?
We need a motion.
Do I need a motion or?
There's.
Okay, sorry.
Well, is the council ready for?
Any other conversation, discussions?
I mean, I, I, six parties and coming on nine months is, you know, not a wave, it would seem to me. We have thrown our full-throated support as a city council behind public safety to the tune of $25,000 bonuses for a session. We have a 15-strong cadet corps. We are doing a lot to make things safer and better for our citizens. Certainly, when I was walking around campaigning, I didn't hear a lot of people asking me for more government involvement in their existence, particularly within the four walls. So, I, I would tend to think that, well, we are doing a lot here to mitigate a lot of concerns for a lot of people who probably don't speak up very much about the level, the way the government works with them. I also think that what we are doing and reinforcing the, the chief's effort and reinforcing our ability to convey to children that it would statistically is a diminishing issue in their lives by the National Institutes of Health. You know, I, I just don't know that piling on laws are always what we need to be doing. I mean, we have a fortune teller law on the books.
No, no, a defense in that, that, that predated me by at least a decade. So, it's a matter of, I think it's a matter of it not coming off the books as.
Well, you know, that, that argument is that these things, we, we put these on as someone did with the billiard code law and the fortune teller law and the bingo law and all of these ones that we have, understanding in the context of their time what those laws would mean and how they would implement them. But those laws and this law will outlive us. I have no doubt that this will pass. This will outlive us and our best intents. And while we may sit here and say for these six parties this year, we don't intend to enforce it on 19-year-old airmen at an apartment complex at the intersection of, you know, at the Grand Tropez, you know, 20 years from now in a different auspice and a different dais, that might be exactly who we're looking at when we send these things forth. So, that's, that's my two cents.
Advice I was given when I was running was, Scott, remember one council cannot tie the hands of any future council. So, if that becomes the case, then that, this could be overturned at some point.
We still have our fortune teller law.
Well, I think, I think we need to give direction to Greg to add something on the agenda.
That's the next thing I'm going to be getting into after I get out of here. So, don't mess with that law.
I'm ready for it to be read, though, if you are.
Certainly.
Don, are you ready to be read? Right.
I'll read it by title and then council can decide whether to introduce. An ordinance adding chapter 13 to title seven of the El Segundo Municipal Code prohibiting the hosting, permitting, or allowing of gatherings at which persons under 21 years of age are consuming alcoholic beverages or using marijuana illegally is ready for introduction.
So, moved?
I'll, no, no, so, you.
Correct. And then I, I would suggest since the resolution actually goes with the ordinance and the resolution becomes irrelevant, if you will, without the ordinance. So, why don't we bring back the resolution with the second read? Okay?
Okay, so, we're done?
Yes.
All right. So, now we're going back to number three and number four. So, this time in place, we're hearing to fix for public hearing. Item number three, consideration and possible action to conduct public hearing regarding amending the various sections of the El Segundo Municipal Code, ESMC Title 15, zoning code to one, update and introduce new definitions related to measuring building height. Number two, establish new zoning code standards for measuring the maximum height of buildings. And number three, allow the director to approve an adjustment to the maximum building height of up to, up, by up to five feet pursuant to ESMC Chapter 15-24. Adopting this ordinance is categorically exempt from further SEQA review under SEQA Guidelines 15, 15303, as a class three. New construction or conversion of small structures, 15304, as a class four, minor alteration to land, and does not constitute a project that requires environmental review in accordance to SEQA Guidelines 15061. B3, because the proposed zone text amendment establishes new definitions and provisions for measuring building height. The proposed ordinance constitutes an action that does not have the potential to cause significant effects on the environment and is therefore exempt from the provisions of SEQA. Applicant, City of El Segundo, fiscal impact, none. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in time and manner?
Yes.
City clerk, was any written communication, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
No.
So, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will make this presentation?
Greg McLean will be making this presentation and the item four presentation when we get to that one.
I'd like to start with an apology for that long title. They're not, they're not all going to be like that. So, a very brief presentation on this. This is not changing the zone or the height limit in any zone. This just changes how we measure it. So, currently, I'm going to give an example on a flat lot. The way that the height is measured is to the midpoint of the slope of the roof and then there's another six feet that can go above that. And it's, it's a reasonable way of going about it, but it works really well on a flat lot, but it gets really cumbersome on a, on a slope lot. So, let's take a look at the slope lot. First of all, we like to live on flat surfaces more than slope surfaces. So, there's going to be a problem here because the slope lots measure the height straight up from the ground currently. So, the height limit slopes the same way the ground does. So, what that means is anything below the floor on the low end is what I'm going to call the fill penalty because it counts towards your height, but you can't live in it, right? It's lost space. So, what people do frequently is to do a cut into the slope and that gives them a level surface to measure the height from, such as this, and that gives them a, a level, flat height limit. But what happens is you get a cut penalty where any portion of the building that's below ground is still counted toward the height, which doesn't really make sense because it's below the ground. So, what we're proposing is to take two points, these would be adjacent to the building, and to average out the, the elevation of those and come up with a, with an invisible plane, if you will, that's halfway between the low point and the high point and use that plane as the point of measuring the height, such as this. That way, you end up with a level height limit. Now, that's the old height limit. There's the new one, there's the old one. So, effectively, what we're doing is we're basically just transferring this allowable area to be built under the old system in the red triangle and moving it over to the blue system. So, you can see they're the same size. This is, this is a net neutral amendment. It just makes the process so much simpler to calculate. Now, on a larger lot, you can have multiple grade planes. So, the first part on the upper part will do a cut. Now, the blue is floating, but that represented the original ground level. So, we'll take the midpoint there, we'll measure our height and there's the height limit for that. And they do another cut over here on the lower part, so it's stepping down the hill. And this also gets a midpoint between the blue dot and the red dot and we get a new height. And that's how height will be measured. So, it works even on the steepest slopes because at the discretion of the applicant, they can create multiple steps down the hill and it conforms roughly to the, to the, the way it's done now, only it's just a lot easier to calculate. So, why the change? One is it's simple and it's easy to calculate. It's, it's easy, especially if you're doing a sloped roof on a, on a slope lot. That's, that, I can't even show you that example. It just becomes impossible to calculate. There's no impact on the flat lots. They will experience no change. It solves the problem of level buildings on slope lots. There's no, there's no cut penalty. There's no fill penalty. It averages those out. And, and lastly, it's a net neutral impact. It just makes everything easier for us. So, this ordinance is explained in the long title, is categorically exempt from SEQA. So, we recommend that the city council introduce this ordinance tonight. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, so, at this time, we'd like to open public hear, the public hearing is now open for public input?
Good evening. My name is Mark Tellez. Represent property owners planning to build a 400-car parking garage in Smoky Hollow and we need this height definition change in order to underwrite the parking garage. Currently, lot consolidation allows us to get the 50 feet. We expect the FAR vote to come soon, but without this definition change, we can't accomplish the 50 feet, can't accomplish the FAR, can't underwrite the parking garage. So, seems minor, but it's super important, I think, to many people, not only our company in Smoky Hollow because of the major topography changes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that will close public here. Oh, I'm sorry. You can come up. Sorry. I was trying.
I'll make this really quick. On behalf of Stanson Properties, we also support this ordinance and it, again, will help any future property development or redevelopment that they do with this adjustment to the height definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? So that closes public hearing. Council discussion?
I just had a couple of questions for staff. I think you were prompted for this one, right, Greg? I hope.
I'll let you know when I hear it.
So the one thing I wasn't certain about, and it applies to residential units, numerous times in the definition of height, not to exceed 32 feet and two stories.
Right.
Two stories, two stories. And recently, I helped work on a development on a slope lot, and yes, following existing grade is not exciting at all, but it did end up that fill penalty. Now, sometimes that fill penalty can be as much as a seven-foot height, but that would be a third story in this, so it wouldn't qualify unless, of course, it was a basement. But basement is, the definition of basement is not redefined here or how it will be applied on a slope lot. Because, I mean, really, if you look at, we're talking 10%, 15% of the lots in El Segundo, and really, my question is going to apply to maybe 2% of the lots because it's going to have an extreme enough slope, front to rear, or rear to front. And as you know, basement can only be considered a basement and not a story if more than 50% of it is below grade. So I just didn't know how staff was planning on looking at that or if it came up in discussion.
It, it did come up, but the, the way that this ordinance was designed was to be neutral in its impacts, and what you're asking would be a change to the residential zoning standards, which we're willing to explore and entertain writing an ordinance on. But I would not recommend incorporating it into this because then it doesn't become neutral anymore. Then you're adding another story of possible development. So that would kick it out of its, you know, its neutral SEQA impact. And that's why we didn't include it in this ordinance. This is the stripped-down model that just addresses the measurement method and not address the question that you have is, is there a way to allow that third floor that's down in the ground anyway? But we can come back and take a look at that if it's the will of the council.
I just, every time, you know, from my experience on the planning commission, I always looked at these code changes as what landmines are we setting for ourselves to step in down the, down the road? And, I mean, everything that we've worked on at the planning department is to clean up the code.
Yes.
Moving forward to eliminate ambiguity. So that's where the question came from. The other question is, I was under the impression that the maximum height was 26 feet. You're saying that the maximum height is not changing, but it says 32 feet all over the place.
Yeah, because it's 20, it's 26 feet plus six more to get to the peak. So we just simplify that and make it 32, but a flat roof building would still be at 26.
But say you went from to, instead of a one-to-four pitch?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because some architectural, if you're doing like an old craftsman home, you're going to have a very shallow pitch.
Yeah.
So essentially now going, instead of going to the 26 to the midpoint, 32, you're going to have a much taller structure.
But 26 is still to the midpoint, but it would be a taller structure, yeah. That's a loophole that exists currently. This would eliminate that.
Got it.
So real quick, I guess I need to, to close, make a, take a motion to close public hearings? Yeah.
Public comment.
Okay. All right. So make a motion. Okay, Don, you had a que, you had a question?
The parking garage that was referenced is going to be jeopardized if this doesn't go through. Where's that going to be built?
That's, that's in Smoky Hollow on the east side between Oregon, I forgot the next street over. It's in that general area, I believe. Am I correct? Yeah. Oregon and Kansas.
Oregon and Kansas.
The problem with that, with that, that lot is that it's extreme slope condition. And so, remember, under the current codes, even the portions of that parking structure that are underground are still counted toward the height. So that, which doesn't make any sense.
They're still kind of what?
Toward the height of that structure. So you could have four floors below ground and one floor above, and it may still max out on the height. And that just really doesn't make any sense. Those, those portions that are below ground really shouldn't be counted. So if this, if this change doesn't go through, then, then he would have to build a one-story shorter structure, which isn't going to work for what they need to do the other work on that property. That's what he was referring to.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Chris?
I do not.
Okay, so city attorney will read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor Pretam and Council. An ordinance amending various sections of the El Segundo Municipal Code in Title 16 to redefine how building height is measured and to allow the director to approve adjustments to the allowable building height is ready for introduction.
Who will introduce the ordinance?
I would like to introduce it.
All right. Second reading and adoption of the ordinance was scheduled for September 4th. All right, on to number four. This is the time and place in hearing fix for a public hearing, consideration and, consideration and possible action to conduct a public hearing regarding the environmental assessment, number EA 1228, Zone Tax Amendment, number ZTA 18-03, to add Chapter 30 to Title 15, zoning regulations on the municipal code to require a discretionary site plan review permit for specified types of development. Fiscal impact none. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in timely manner?
Yes, it was.
City clerk, has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Yes, it was, and you have received it.
All right, the public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who will give the presentation?
It'll be me again. He mentioned that before.
Got OT.
Okay, so, sorry for the, all the words on this, but this is basically, sorry, I miswrote that, but except for in the C4 zone, the city currently does not have a discretionary land use permit for all developments. There are certain things that are permitted by right, and in certain zones, that can be a very, very large and very impactful development that would be permitted with nothing more than a building permit. And so seeing that this is the situation, we are looking to impose a site plan review process on these, these types of uses. We have thresholds where this would kick in and thresholds where it would be below, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But the point of this is to ensure that proposed developments are consistent with the general plan and zoning and that basically they hold up their end of the bargain in mitigating any impacts that they create. That's the gist of it. So the criteria for requiring a site plan review would be as follows. A single-family residential development of 10 units or more, a multifamily residential development of 10 units or more. So in other words, if you built nine, you would be exempt from this. New commercial and institutional or industrial structures that are 50,000 square feet or more, additions to existing structures that are 50,000 square feet or more. And we're, I wanted to point out that we're excluding parking structures from this. So parking structures, we feel, are generally beneficial and we don't want to encumber their development. The planning commission will sit as the hearing body for site plan review. The commission may approve, approve with conditions, or deny, actually, but they can approve or approve with conditions if the following findings can be made. The project must be consistent with the goals and policies and objectives of the general plan and the zoning. It must be functionally compatible with the area that it is located in, and the project will not adversely affect the general welfare of the city. That's it. It's a very simple ordinance. The key is the thresholds.
I might just point out that previously, this is a much less onerous threshold than what existed previously. The prior threshold was 15,000 square feet of new development or reuse, and this is 50,000 square feet. So it's more than a 300% increase with regard to what would be permitted by right as opposed to what would require a discretionary permit.
Two questions. First question, what's the cost?
So let's, let's have a public, we have a public hearing first.
Well, if you're referring to the application cost, that would have to be done by a separate resolution, which we'll come back with later. We haven't calculated the cost yet.
Got it.
Okay, so at this time, let's open the public hearing is now for public input. Any? Don't run to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close that. Do I need a motion to close it? No. Okay, so now we will close the public hearing and have council discussion.
Sorry. It's different where I came from. You ask questions, I need a public comment. Second question, what triggered this?
The realization that when we, when we removed the, the SEQA guidelines that were onerous, that it left us with a little bit of a vulnerability. And as I said, a very large project in certain zones could be done with nothing more than a building permit regardless of whatever impacts it has. And the way that SEQA is structured, building permits are what they call ministerial permits. Those are exempt. As soon as you determine that that's all you need, you're done. And you're not doing an initial study, you're not looking for categorical exemptions, you just, you know, go to the finish line. So we recognize that there's a potential that this could happen, and, and we wanted to close that loophole. None have squeaked through in the meanwhile, so, you know, it hasn't been a disaster or anything, but we don't want to be the ones present when that happens. So this is just a safeguard.
Don, any questions? Chris?
I mean, yeah, as I understand it, this was just a matter of, of building in a tripwire for someone where we thought we had some exposure. Are there any, well, I guess you just answered. You said there's nothing that's come in under the wire, so that was, that was part of the nature of the question.
No, there's nothing that's come in. There's probably, I can think of one potential, possible future project that this may, you know, impact. But there, undoubtedly, there will be others in the future.
All right, and so city attorney will read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Mayor Pretam and Council, an ordinance of the city, council of the city of El Segundo approving Zone Tax Amendment, number ZTA 18-03, adding Chapter 30 to Title 15, zoning regulations of the municipal code to require a discretionary site plan review permit for specified types of development is ready for introduction.
Who would like to introduce?
I'd love to introduce this.
All right, second reading and adoption of the ordinance is scheduled then for September 4th. So that means we are on to.
Six.
Number six, reports and committees, commissions, boards. So number six, consideration and possible action to announce the appointment to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Recommendation is to appoint Ty Lesher to the Arts and Culture Committee as a vacancy came up when Julie Dodd was stepped off of the committee. Do I need a motion?
No, you just need to say, I can help you out here.
Okay.
That is, his term expires June 30th, 2019.
All right, so welcome Ty Lesher to the Arts and Culture Committee. Yeah, see you next week. All right, consent agenda. All items will be adopted in one motion. Do I have any polls for the consent agenda?
I want to poll number 10.
Anybody else? No? Don, you good? All right, so I'd like to, would someone like to make a motion to approve items number seven, eight, and nine, and 11?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second, aye.
Oh, second.
Scott, second.
Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get this done. I promised that we would get done faster than. So all, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. All right, Scott.
Item 10, I just had a couple of questions for staff. Should I direct those? So do I have to?
You have to read it first.
Oh, I'm so excited. I pulled this. Consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to A) increase the planning and building safety department budgets for professional technical services by $120,000 and B) increase the contract amounts to the following consultants, J Lee Engineering, Inc., Building Safety, and Michael Baker International Planning, which are necessitated by an unexpected high volume of plan checks and building permits. The additional funding is proposed to come from revenue generated by plan checks and permit fees, which are projected to be approximately $600,000 over the budgeted estimate by the end of the fiscal year. Fiscal impact $120,000.
So I'll start, but I squeeze planning and building every year to project what they believe they're going to need in consulting services to deal with projects that their staff either doesn't, doesn't have the specialty skills to, to address or that are peak workload issues where we have to bring in additional help. And it's a challenge every year for, I think, for planning and building to forecast what amount of money they're going to need. I don't want them to forecast too high because then we're sitting on dollars that we could be using for something else. So this last year, planning and building projected, forecast what they thought they were going to need, and we actually had more activity, which is a good thing. That means we brought in, we had more activity, brought in more revenue than we thought we were going to have, and they addressed my concern that they didn't sit on too much money in the budget. But we came in too low, so planning and building needs additional dollars to finish out the remainder of this fiscal year so that we can cover our consultant costs for the last few months. And again, as the staff report indicates, those are offset by the increase in revenues above and beyond what we thought we were going to bring in this year. And if you have any other questions, Sam can address them.
Yeah, my main question was, how much money are we spending every year on consultants?
In that department?
In that department. Because these are plan checkers and engineers, correct?
Plan checkers, engineers, inspectors, planners, front counter staff. This year, we had a, on building and safety side, we had a planning professional service consultant budget of $190,000, and on planning side, we had $20,000.
So 210.
Yeah, that was, that was what was approved. There was additional funding that was spent in professional technical because where we have a number of vacancies, those vacant positions with the staff cost savings, those money is converted to professional technical and utilized. And, and this is actually, additional funding was necessary because those professional technical are more costly than in having an internal staff, so that's part of the problem.
There, so it costs us more to have a full staff?
Consultants.
It costs us more to have consultants?
Yes.
And so how long have we been working with consultants as that stop fill?
It was, it was happening before I got here, and, and it's, it's been consistent over the last 10 years that I've been here.
You know, honestly, I think this is one of those departments where it's always going to be a blended staffing model. We're never going to have a electrical engineer on staff, for, for example, because we probably don't get enough volume of work for that specialty. So we're always going to have some consulting support. And also, we don't want to staff to our highest level of activity, we want to staff to sort of that, that base level of activity. And when we do have peaks, then we bring in additional help. And just to give you some perspective, I think in the early 2000s, we were spending closer to $2 million a year. So there's wide fluctuation and variance in, in the level of consultants that we need. We've had success in bringing on additional consulting firms to create some competition against each other and to, and to some flexibility and, and accessibility to consultants that we didn't have 10 years ago.
And now the choice of those consultants, that's not something that goes out to bid and the bids are reviewed and then we would ever vote on, is it?
It's not, it's not so much formal, but we do informal bidding where we go talk to them and say, how much? It's, it's all based on, some of the cities based, based on percentage of plan check and, and permit fees. I find it more controlling and cost-effective to go on an hourly rate. And so those are easily compared to with other consultants.
So just real quick, just to continue that, so I, I know we have five, currently five open FTEs in building and planning. I know that given that our, we were down in HR director and HR manager, you know, creates some of the problem, but how long have we been, like, what's our average over the last year and a half, say, have we had open FTEs? Like, is five seem to be consistent or, like, why is it that we're having such a high number of FTEs in building and planning? Like, I'm just, maybe we need to reevaluate the structure of the department so that we can, I'm just not sure, like, how long have we had five FTEs open in that department?
All year, right? I think it's been the entire fiscal year, and I think it's a combination of things. One is priority, priority with respect to HR's ability to recruit, and, and in some of the recruitments we have done, we haven't been successful, we haven't found candidates for the position. We did recruit, we did interviews for the two vacant front counter or permit tech positions this week or today.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to move forward with those two. The plan check positions have been more challenging, I think, based on the The plan check positions have been more challenging, I think, based on the level of construction activity. Getting access to an engineer to come work for us is more difficult right now, I think primarily based on where the construction industry is at.
Isn't Lucas an engineer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. But he's a full-time employee, he's not a consultant?
He's a full-time.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that, you know, with the institution of the new technology that we have planned, and maybe some changes in our processes, we can try to minimize the use of contract consulting work in the future.
I would... Yeah, I think moving forward, I would... I'm not going to stop... I'm not going to stop this from going through today, but I...
That's a great flag.
Yes, it's just, we got to do something. I mean, even if it's, okay, if you look at the last four or five years, what have we done, you know, what is the average? Or what does our pipeline look like? Okay, we can add a staff member, we can do this, because consultant fees just add up, add up, add up over time, and it's just... Yeah. I mean, it just burns me. Sorry.
Well, and it doesn't build... The other thing, it doesn't help building bench strength within the department, so you're not building a team, and it's... There's constant flow and flux, and it really doesn't help.
Unless we're using the consultants to ultimately cherry pick their staff and then hire them full-time after we've trained them as a consultant. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion to move approval?
Go for it. Somebody... Go ahead, Don.
I'm voting against it, so I'm not going to make a motion. You got to stop it.
But if we don't move forward with it, they're not going to be able to cover the costs, and it's going to be a deficit in their budget, right? So, the money's going to have to come from somewhere, because technically, we've kind of already spent it.
Is that true? Have we already spent the money?
Well, I think the net effect of this is that we are forecasting that we need these dollars to finish the fiscal year. If... I'm guessing there would be a service impact. If we don't have access to these funds, then I'm making it up, but, you know, the plan check turnaround time might go from four weeks to eight weeks. We'll do the same amount of work with fewer staff people, so the give there is likely on the efficiency of getting the work done.
So, maybe if you could, you know, if we prove this, provide us with a plan on how we're going to resolve this issue going forward, like a long-term plan, a comprehensive... So, with some key dates and timelines built into it so that we have a set goal and maybe a restructure, or maybe moving people into some of these key positions. Because I know, like, one of the concerns is that we have 39 open heads currently, and in... I know in the private sector, if you have a head count open for a year, you've lost that head count, and we just seem to keep these FTEs open year after year, and at some point, we just have to, you know, put some...
Yeah, that certainly isn't our objective, that, like I said, there's always going to be some balance in this department between full-time staff, permanent staff, and consultants. We're high on the consultant side right now.
Yeah.
We want to get that back down, so it's higher on the full-time staff side.
Right, but if we could just see a plan, like a comprehensive plan, and how we're going to get that done.
We've been high on the consultant side for a long time, have we not? I mean, since...
We're higher right now than we have been in the past.
Were we working with consultants when you were in that position?
Yes.
Nine years ago?
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is... It's almost like, this is the way we do business, and I guess to Don's point, at some point, it...
We had to put the...
You kind of, hey, like, let's... We got to send a message and say, "Guys, we got to stop this."
I think you're absolutely right, and I think after the Great Recession, we were a little gun-chy about filling too many positions. But it was last council or the council before, we made a decision to fill positions. I have to say, in the last 12 to 18 months, we've had some problems with HR, and I think it's not only my department that's had problems filling the positions, but with Joe taking over the department, things have been moving much, much faster than they have been. So, some of the positions that's been vacant for a long time, it looks promising that I'm going to be able to fill very soon.
But just, I would like to see a plan, given that we are going to be instituted new system, and since these positions have been open for a while, come back to us with what you feel like your department should look like. Just don't fill vacancies that have been open for a year, and we've been doing them for a year, just because they're vacant. Like, let's do this smartly and make sure that we're filling the positions that you really need. So, if you could just come back to us with, "This is how my department really should look, and here's the position I really do need," and maybe this would be a good time, since you have five openings, to redesign your department so that it's optimum for anticipation of the new system as well as the changes in the business environment.
So, this has gone on for a number of years. Over those years, have we had different firms provide these services, or has this J Lee Engineering, Michael Baker usually been the solution?
They've... These departments, these companies have been part of the solution, but there are a number of others. On the building side, there are... There've been three or four, and on the planning side, there are several others, right? And we're constantly looking for competition and looking for other consultants to compete for our business.
Well, it needs to change. It hasn't been changing. Years and years have gone on. I've been on this thing spreading over 10 years now. You're going to have to put it to a crisis to get it to change. We're just going to go on, we'll be sitting here, next year, same thing will go down.
I have another question, this may open up a can of worms, so I do apologize ahead of time. Well, we just restructured a lot of fees, and those fees were based upon the cost to do the plan check. This says that, you know, this cost is going to be covered by the plan check fees that are going to be received. Now, when we did the assessment on the cost of actually physically doing those plan checks, they weren't based upon the cost of that consultant, they were based upon the cost of, say, a full-time employee?
The cost of the consultants, I think what they did was they looked at it on a 12-month process, and that time period includes the cost of full-time staff as well as the consultant cost.
Got it.
So, and I'm going to step one step further, too, to maybe try to explain where some of the improvements we made, is if you recall, last time we did a fee study until recently was about nine, 10 years ago. At the time, when the fee study was done, there was a tremendous amount of consulting cost. And so, when the fee consultant came on board now, nine, 10 years after, I said, "Is there an opportunity where the fee actually is going to remain the same or actually go lower?" And there's just no way, with purse costs, with health costs, there's just no way that would be true. It turned out to be true. Over the 10 years, we ramped up more staff, internal staff, and reduced the consulting cost, and when they did the study, the fee, if you notice, the fee didn't go up or actually fell in some of the cases. So, I think we're moving in the right direction, I guess is my point.
Yes, I'm going to make another statement, and that is that when we use these consultants, just from a consumer standpoint, I have plans there, the person that's plan checking them happens to be a consultant, and that consultant's not there five days a week or four days a week. They're not in till next Wednesday, and you got to wait till next Wednesday to hear it. So, I mean, I guess to your point, Greg, if we say no, and then from here until the end of the fiscal year, plan checks slow down, are they really slowing down? Because right now, I could tell you, it's not like it's speedy, because if your plans land with a plan checker who is contracted, and they're only there a couple of days a week, you're only getting service a couple of days a week.
Yeah, but all those additional services that you talked about will stop, because we won't have the funds to pay them, so service will suffer next two months.
I guess I'll make this point, and you might already know it or maybe not, but I think having some level of consultant help in this department is a smart business move for us, and it is what allows us to meet our KPIs. If we have a KPI which calls for us to turn plans around in four weeks as our standard and the customer expectation, then we're going to have to staff to that level of service for not just our slow times and our regular times, but also our busy times, right? So, if you're telling me that having, meeting that KPI is important and maintaining that service level is important, I either need to use consultants to take care of those peaks, or I need to have enough staff here that are full-time city employees to take care of those peaks, which means when we're slow, they have... You know, they're the Maytag repairman, right? So, some blend is probably where we want to be as far as having full-time staff and using consultants for specialty areas, like, you know, electrical engineering, where we don't have a full-time electrical engineer on staff, or meeting those peaks. Now, yes, I admit, right now, we're on the heavy side of that balance. We have more consultants that are doing day-to-day work as opposed to peak or specialty work, and that's what we want to stop. But we need to get to the point where we can recruit the right people, find the right people to those positions, and fill them. And we'll get there, but even when we're there, we're still going to rely on some level of consultant assistance for those peaks and activity.
So, we got time until our next budget session, right? So, I guess the comment that I'll make to my fellow council members here is, if we move forward with this, we can move forward with this with a little caveat that come, you know, fiscal year 1920, that we're looking at going into, or 1819, sorry, that we're going to look at the planning budget and look at the budget, what monies are budgeted towards, you know, this temp staff, the consultants, and we'll be looking to hopefully trim that so that we can see movement moving forward. Does that make sense? Does that... You know what I'm saying, Don? So, we get through this gap, and then moving forward, it's, okay, so business will not be affected in the next two months, because we'll give you the money to get through it, but come November, better have another plan in place.
Right, well, it's more...
Not remove the consultants altogether, but just, we got to do something.
Well, I think it's having a plan of how you're going to use the consultants, ensuring that we are looking at the department, you know, with the understanding with the new system coming on board, are we prepared to... Because bringing on that new system is going to be really arduous for that department, and to do it effectively, we're going to need to have trained people on our business, and having a ton of consultants in there isn't really going to... We're not going to have the implementation, the system's not going to go well. So, I think what I'm looking for is a much more comprehensive plan for the department in how you're going to get us through this next year with the implementation of a new system. Because you're going to have this, at this juncture, to move forward with this new system, you're going to have to look at processes, do flow charts, and all that's going to take your current staff away from their day-to-day, and I just want to see a comprehensive plan on what you're going to do, what the department should look like in the future, and how you're going to get us through that in the next 18 months.
I mean, it is a matter of planning, having, sitting in the most elastic to the economy department that we have, so, you know, consultants naturally even out that ebb and flow, so having an informed interplay between the human resources element and what his planning element is, I mean, that's something that I think that we quite reasonably will expect going into the next budgeting year. And, you know, ideally, that $210,000 plus the backfill of professional technical, which invariably takes up another significant chunk of this, we can limit that as best as possible with the expectation that we won't be overstaffed in the future, because it is inherently an elastic department. So, yeah, I think it's all sensible.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Do I got to read the whole thing? Second. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don?
No.
Nay.
All right. All right. Sorry, I have to sign back in. All right, and that can... That's all the consent agenda items. Any new business? There's none. So, we're going to move on to reports. City manager, any report?
I'll pass, thank you.
City attorney?
At the next meeting, I'll bring forward some information about some movement on the solid waste front as far as food waste and requirements that are coming forward to the residential areas, and there's some legislation and also some regulations that are being drafted, and council may want to weigh in on that with regard to Sacramento. And also, by then, we should have a... The session's coming to a near end in Sacramento, so we should have some update on numerous bills and what will come out of the machine in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing this evening.
City treasurer is not here. Chris, come in.
Just like, take an opportunity to thank the staff, and we invariably, in the last two weeks, were getting ready for this meeting and the meetings to follow, have put them through quite the wringer of a number of questions and overlays, some of which they have entertained despite the simplicity on our part, and some of which are just intrusive and ornery on our part. So, thanks to them for that, and it's been a nice month of really cool city events, and I will yield some of the floor to those, because some people here had a bigger part of those than I did. But, you know, thanks to everyone who puts those on from my end.
Mr. Dicklin?
I'll echo Chris. The car show this weekend was fantastic. Great event put on by the Chamber and the Police Officers Association, very well attended. My kids had a fabulous time. I also wanted to make mention that the El Segundo School Bond is going on the ballot this fall in November, and it will be named officially Measure ES. So, Measure ES will be on the ballot this November.
Dr. Brand?
Pass.
All right, for me, I just want to say, you know, congratulations to the Art Walk. It was the last Art Walk of the summer, happened last Thursday, very high success. Thank you to the city and all the participants. I know the Arts and Culture Group works with them as well. And then, thank you to the POA and the Chamber of Commerce for the car show. And last but not least, I did want to let you know that officially as of yesterday, the surfing is the official sport of California. So, I know our lustrous mayor will be happy. Yeah, exactly. So, anyway, at that time, with all that, I will... I'm going to back open up for public communication. Anybody left in the audience who'd like to run to the podium? Yeah, if you want to. No?
I just wanted to say, as for the Art Walk, fabulous. The last one, I don't know if you guys had any part of it, but myself and my dog, we stayed till 10 o'clock, went all over the place. It was probably the best ever. What I could probably heard from the people I've talked to and the business owners is they would really like to see it pushed all the way till December, maybe once a month from September, October, and December end it, because that's where all the Christmas season is. So, I did not hear one complaint about it, except that it went too fast. And I would like to put a motion out that you guys could talk about maybe making it once a month until December. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other comments? See no other public comments? We will close public comments, and we are adjourned at 10:20.